All right, can you hear Sheila?
I can hear you.
All right. The time is 7:00 PM and I will call this meeting to order. Maybe a roll call, please.
Mayor Reichel?
Here.
Pro Tem Henryham?
Here.
Trustee Brettinall?
Here.
Trustee Klassen?
Here.
Trustee Inglehart?
Here.
Trustee Poston?
Here.
Trustee Seifert?
Here.
All right, may I pledge allegiance in a mode of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, I did not hear from anyone today.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Have anybody signed in for?
I don't believe we do. I almost get to have a blank page.
Okay, so everyone is here for an agenda item?
I believe so.
Okay, all right. Okay, then moving on, the first, next item is the consent agenda. And it contains the minutes of the January 27th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting, the renewal of the retail liquor license for Columbine Liquor, and Resolution Number 8, Series 2025, a resolution of the Board of Trustees awarding the bid for the Grand Avenue Improvements Phase 1 project to Frontier Paving in the amount of $954,939. Would anyone like to discuss any of those or make some?
I have a question for Sheila on Columbine Liquor. We haven't, they haven't had any violations in last year?
They actually did have a violation last March. It's kind of ironic, they had set up and scheduled their server training classes for April 1st, and it was a couple of weeks before that that the state did do a, an operation and caught them selling to a minor. They have made good with that. Like I said, they've gotten their, all of their employees licensed with the server training now. And Columbine did opt to go ahead and pay a fine in lieu of suspension. So, the state did go back in later that year. Everything was fine at that point, and we have no problems with approving this renewal this time.
Okay.
And I had some questions on Resolution 8.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I guess I'm, I'm almost opposed to approving this just for the fact that this is Frontier Paving, and they did the Home Avenue project, and we had delays, we had cost overruns there, and they also paved 9th Street, and we had to go in and, because there are soft spots, go in and repatch this. And on the project description, it says remove and replace ductile iron with C900 and ground. It says, well, it'll remove the 12-inch ductile water main. So are we really going to remove the ductile main between the houses?
No, we won't remove it. We'll fill it.
Okay.
And abandon it. We won't remove it.
Okay.
And we'll replace it with C900.
Okay, gotcha. And on the project description, I don't see any description on curb, gutter, sidewalk. Are they redoing that? Are they adding new?
Not in that area. They'll go through some sidewalk there between 16th and Pickett, and they'll replace that section of sidewalk when we get past the park going west. Then we'll start adding curb gutter and sidewalk.
Uh huh.
But not in this phase.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
And the home project, that was not Frontier's fault. I mean, we came up with a solution to that problem. I wish we would have done it on Grant or 9th Street, but that was in the middle of the project, and that was not Frontier Paving's fault either. I mean, the soil's in silt.
Yeah.
Soil's in silt.
I, I'm just, I'm just going to add that, you know, the, the cost overrun, or just even on the bid price last year, that was poor estimating. And we've corrected that and worked with our town engineer Derek Walter. The other piece that we did is we did a lot more subsurface investigation prior to, one, coming up with the project cost estimate, but two, bidding it out. We should not run into any of the same issues that we ran into on the Home Avenue project. That was more on us than it was on anybody else. That was not Frontier's fault.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure this, this isn't a repeat, just, we have taxpayers and citizens.
Right, and I, and I, you know, I understand that completely, but the Home Avenue project, the majority of that was on us. It was a poor estimation, and we didn't do any subsoil work prior to bidding it out. We corrected that for this project and made sure that we did all that investigatory work as much as we possibly could do to make sense.
Okay.
Are we going to run into a cost overrun? I, I can't tell you we are or we are not, but it certainly was not Frontier Paving's issue.
Okay, gotcha.
And they did do everything they could to minimize the problems. They worked with us in that project, other than the problems, it was right on schedule. And it was only like a week and a half beyond schedule with all the problems, so they worked very well with us.
Okay, okay. And, and I guess in the future, I'd like to see, you know, at least on the town's website, a copy of the plans, just so we know what we're approving. Because, I mean, it, it would be nice for us to know what we're approving, and it would be nice for the citizens to go, what are they talking about? Oh, let's go to the website and then see the plans, then they know the entire scope of the project and what's going on.
We can do that.
All right. And then, how much was, we got a grant for this, right?
We did.
A portion of it.
Five hundred thousand.
Okay, five hundred thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, we are very appreciative of FMLD for being able to do this project to the extent that we're able to do it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a question about the selection criteria for the paving project. Was anything other than cost used as a factor in determining which, which vendor got it?
No, it was most, all cost, the cost of the project.
Does that concern anyone?
Well, not to the sense that they've worked with them before and they have just reported it, that the majority of the issues, you know, according to our town administration, and the director is letting us know was in relation to not having a full preparation and providing the soil study to the company that was completing their job, but according to Director London is letting us know that they've actually worked well with them to get it corrected, and they did it in a timely manner. If we can save ourselves, if you look into those prices in there, you know, the differentiator between what they're charging us, and if we contract with these other companies, there are potentially 150 to 200,000 dollars more, and they could come up with ways of having more costs. If I'm looking into a company that did complete the job appropriately eventually compared to what was provided to them, and has a different, difference in price of 150,000, I would also look into pricing, because if they can go ahead and work with the town again, the same, you know, in a way that they can accomplish it, and they're coming down with that pricing difference, I would go for the lesser one, based on the information that was provided to them. Have you, has the town worked with some of the other four?
The town has worked with all of the other contractors, and they all do a very good job for us.
Okay, feedback and comparison?
Yeah, and my, my concern there comes from my day job where I work with a lot of vendors, and obviously price is a major factor, but we also have ourselves as an organization, and within my team, we have a template of the criteria by which they're selected, so they know they have to check boxes other than lowest price. The old adage, you get what you pay for, comes to mind, and I, I'm not doubting the, the way that you made the decision, or the decision you came up with, but rather I have concerns about the way that, if we're always getting the cheapest vendor, and they know that, are we getting subpar work in order to save that money? What, what control mechanisms do we have during the project to ensure not just that it's getting done cheaply, but that it's getting done correctly?
I understand where you're coming from, and if this low bidder was somebody that I've never worked with, or the town's never worked, I would have those same questions. So, I, I believe that Frontier will do a good job for us.
And I don't assign just caveat thought to budgeting process, to public financing. You know, we, we have our budgeting, and it's public information as well, which it doesn't, like to Mayor's point, a long time ago, it doesn't really put us in a really good position when we put bids out there, because we are almost telling how much we are aiming to spend on this. So, to find a company that came up with a budgeting that was, you know, considerably less than what it was out there, it comes to me very honestly, in a way.
Okay, thank you.
Does K5 even have the ability to do this in-house, or would they be subcontracting it out?
K5, I would have had some questions about if they were low bidder, because of, they have a very small crew.
Right.
And this project is going to take more than a three or four man crew.
Okay.
Especially when you get in the intersection of Kim and Grand, there's a lot of valves, lot of, lot of abilities in the ground to get around. So I would have had some questions on their ability to do the project.
I know Gould's got the ability to do it themselves, Johnson has the ability, Heil has the ability. I think if you look at some of these other ones besides Frontier Paving, you can look around the valley and see projects that have not gone smoothly for them, also that are, you know, months past due, when they were supposed to be done. So, we've had a couple issues with Frontier before, but I don't, they weren't Frontier issues.
Correct.
So, so I think in this one, I, I feel good with going with Frontier Paving on, on this one.
Sometimes no news is good news, and it's a smooth relationship is, preserving that relationship, I think. Like with all of the problems you had, and you're still working with them.
Yeah.
I think that says a lot, because you could have said a lot more about the, everything went wrong.
No, you know, in the construction world, trying to know what's under the ground is hard to do. I mean, you can do a lot of tests, but you're still going to run into something because you can't, you have no idea what's under there.
Well, I recall the, it was only tested every 300 instead of?
No, I'm not sure we did any underground investigation for Front, for Home Avenue.
None at all.
It was, it was inadequate.
It was entirely inadequate.
And that process has been?
That process has been modified.
Modified and adjusted.
Yes.
At the end of the day, speaking only for myself, I trust Joe. That's why we hired him.
Yep.
Yeah.
I ask the questions in an effort for my own knowledge, but also to share with the public for their knowledge, that our, our process is robust.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, or someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All right. Motion by trustee Klassen to approve the consent agenda as written, seconded by trustee Seifert, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
Nope.
None here.
No, sir.
I've got none. Any agenda changes by the board or by staff?
No, sir.
All right. Next up then would be the introduction of our new police officer.
Mr. Mayor, can we move on? She's not here yet.
Okay.
And don't have a reason why.
Okay. Well, I mean, we are 20, or 10 minutes, 15 minutes ahead of schedule, so. Okay?
Thank you.
We'll move on. When she shows up, just raise your hand, we'll get it in there, so.
Yes, sir.
So, the next item on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing Scott and Mona Moyer of Down Valley Septic and Drain for their contributions to the town. So, would you like to come on up to the front here? Oh, so.
Front and, front and center.
Thank you for that, and I will go ahead and read this while you guys stand here. So, whereas Scott and Mona Moyer started Down Valley Septic and Drain in 2001 and have been an integral part of the silt community for many years, and whereas Scott and Mona Moyer have provided the town with a variety of services that include collection line jetting, drain cleaning, portable restroom rentals, sewer line maintenance for every town facility, and whereas Scott and Mona Moyer have generously provided reduced rates and donated service year, years after year to the town for its town host events, senior housing, last minute town needs, or for services after hours emergencies, and whereas Scott and Moyer, Scott and Mona Moyer have always treated the town as silt citizens who are in need of their service with a feeling of priority and compassion, no matter what time of day or night. Whereas the town of Silt is grateful at a relationship with people like Scott and Mona Moyer, who have done so much for the town and make these efforts benefited by so many members of staff, residents, and visitors to our town. Now therefore, I Keith B. Reichel, Mayor of the Town of Silt, do hereby recognize Scott and Mona Moyer and Down Valley Septic and Drain for their significant contributions to the town, and wish them and their company nothing but the best, continued success in the years to come. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Nicole will want to snap a picture before you guys run off, so.
Thank you so much.
You just want to send her a break.
Thank you, thanks Mona.
Hold up my.
Glad to collect.
Come on, no hiding. No, you're okay.
Okay, got it.
All right.
All right.
This is you. You have your box, and you also get the official proclamation copy.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Good job.
Next up is the water plant construction update. Dan, come on up.
Thank you. Dan Galvin with Garnet Construction. This month's update for the Silt Water Treatment Plant Project, health and safety. Glad to report that we continue to have no safety incidents to date at the construction site. Again, glad to report that plant staff and visitors continue to wear proper PPE and high vis equipment, which is very helpful and keeps the site safe. We continue with our controlled entry. Again, we've got the trailer at the front gate, some fog pads there, so those vehicles come and go, usually we hear them, and it's an opportunity to get out and see who's coming and going. And then we continue with our cold weather awareness. We're out of the, at least some of those freezing temperatures we had just a few weeks ago, which is nice. Last week was very nice with the warm temps, and this week's not bad either. Daylight monitoring, we've extended hours just a little bit, as the sun seems to come up earlier and set a little later in the last week or so. Construction progress, picture provided, didn't get as many there this month as our large-scale concrete pours, as we reported at last month, finished out, and so the slab engrave for the building is poured out, and all the subfoundation, that leaves for concrete work, just our sidewalks and a couple of the entryways. Side electrical and yard piping continues, there is a few photos on there of electrical duct banks over in front of the existing water treatment plant. And then masonry is a big function that is wrapping up on site. I anticipated that those guys will be out this week, by the end of the week, and that will allow for our structural steel to start. And so those guys will be on site next week, about a two-week duration, they'll have a crane on site. Those folks are driving by, continue to see a little bit above-ground action there on site. That'll be followed by our metal building erection, and again, crane on site for those guys, and they're anticipated to take about six or seven weeks to get their scope. And again, due to safety concerns with them flying steel and large insulated metal panels, they'll for the most part be our sole subcontractor on site. Again, that would have folks working underneath their operation. Schedule items, the CPM holds fairly well, minimal weather impacts, like I said, is that cold weather we had. It just slowed down progress a little bit, and then one of the local concrete mills was shut down for a few days for some annual maintenance, and so that hindered the masonry activities a little bit. Again, with equipment, deliveries and such, some of the piping equipment, some HVC gear showing up, and some electrical items that are at least making it to some of the vendors in Denver for some additional insulation. With those items, it's helping maintain where we're at with our schedule. And we continue to track September for the performance startup of the new plant and allowing us to get into the existing plant. Budget items, so I've dropped off that contingency log here at the start of the meeting. There's some updates on that, some items that were some positives, some of the buyout savings now that we've gotten through, showed those now that we've gotten through some of our submittal and review by the design engineer, as well as some of the electrical updates. One of the large additional costs that made it on there that we've been talking about is the intake screen, so that number's on there. And with that, there, the, at least the bottom line doesn't change very much compared to last month, down a little bit again, but still positive. And then billing to date, it's 11.2 million billed to date for materials, equipment, and then completed construction on site. And with that, glad to open it up to questions.
I've got a question on 20, the 100%, corrugated steel roof and bollards, is that for the generator? Is that one of the?
Bollards around the generator, a couple area, other areas on site, some of the electro equipment moved, which you card additional bollards. And then corrugated metal roofing, they changed the corrugated product, more robust product from what was in the 70% to 80% documents.
For the whole bill, that was for the building then?
Yes, and that's like a 2,000 square foot, in the CMU section, the 2,000 square foot area, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, and that'll see a, a membrane roof.
Okay.
Yep.
And I just had one question on the strainer equipment and chemical feed and UV equipment, where it says tracking cost savings via equipment buyout?
Yes, those are there, maybe just the management side that just, you know, showing those all the way. 95% confident in the, those cost savings.
Okay.
Yeah. Sometimes we say that, you know, like, those dollar signs are bought or maligned, and once you put them there, you can't get them back, so just showing them there. Again, don't foresee any, anything coming up, there's an opportunity.
Gotcha.
Again, just in case something changes last minute.
Okay.
But yeah, like I said, 95% confident in those cost savings.
All right, thank you. That's all I had.
I guess on that, on that note, could you explain what a buyout?
So, in the beginning, right, got the numbers for the equipment, some, sometime has passed, so since we've essentially executed those contracts, and that is the buyout, that we've actually purchased that piece of equipment or signed the documentation to buy that piece of equipment, hence the buyout and the cost savings that we're seeing. And that went the opposite on a few things like electrical and stuff, when design changes went, some cost changes went up.
This is the highest I've seen of the use of the contingency funds, is it all, like you're saying, because of the electrical?
Yes, and so it's just progress with some of the items, and it's a little bit escalation here and there, and a few things, a few of those items. We're, the intent is essentially for the town to, we're having a meeting later in the week, essentially discuss that strainer, and then a few other items that are on the town's wish list to incorporate into the project with the cost savings, so, I mean, the goal, the potential would be to use all the funds available for the town's items. I think we'll continue to see that trend where we're spending the contingency.
As we spend it, we're getting more, we're getting something for it.
Yes.
We're not spending it because we're going over budget on items, we're adding, adding additional things.
Adding value, yes.
I would, I would point out, we've put a financing package of $28 million that we're going to pay principal and interest on, regardless of whether we spend it on this project. So we're going to spend the contingency on other items that were taken back out of the plans. And that's the meeting that Mr. Galvin mentioned was to start talking about what those funds are going to be used for, those excess funds that we have. There's no point in having excess funds left over, extra project funds, because it just gets used to pay, basically capitalize interest on the, on the debt. We're still going to pay the same principal and interest payments regardless of what we do with the money, in terms of the project expense.
Based on the status right now, what's your confidence level that this opens on time? I know you talked about the cross-connect to the existing plant in September, but as a percentage, what's your confidence level that this gets done on time?
With where we're at now, things are progressing great, I'm 90% confident that we'll get there. The la, we start up the new plant, and then we, that allows us to then temp put water into the existing plant, and then we get in there and demo all the old stuff. So, I think we sit right similar to what Joe was saying about, you know, when you start digging underground, you don't know what you're going to get. When we start tearing into the old plant, there could be some ghosts or goblins that appear. But we, we are looking into those items now, we meet regularly monthly with plant staff, and we're already having discussions about how we take those processes out of service. So, we're putting our best foot forward there.
Great, thank you.
This is a tire joke, but our, there's a good chance that we're going to open our water plant before the Vale Pass rest area reopens.
I don't know if that's a good comparison or not. That could be 10 years from now.
That's why I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna open.
Or not ever.
Or not ever, yeah. That's my thought. Oh, all the steel for this project is already in the United States?
Yes, this is an interesting topic. Some of the equipment is coming out of Canada.
Okay.
But it's already been procured, because we even asked those same questions with, some of things have been going on as of late, if that has any effect on our project, and it doesn't.
On that same line, I did contact CDPHE and Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority, and our entire funding package is secure. So there's no risk that we're going to have any of our funding package clawed back.
Okay. Okay, all right. It's all good news.
Thank you.
I like it. Good. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. All right, next up is the High Water Farms presentation with Sarah Tenchism.
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Sarah, how are you doing?
I'm good, I'm just recovering from a call, and actually I'm going to steal some Kleenex.
You can have the whole box.
I'll take it. I don't need to use it in front of you, but. I was thinking about how I've been presenting to you guys since 2019, and I wasn't even dying my hair back then, so it's been a while. I'm excited to give you some updates on the farm. And with me today is Annie, our youth program coordinator in the corner here. And so we started in 2020 with your blessing and lease, and now we're entering our sixth year of production, fifth year of the youth program, fifth year of our CSA. And so here to give general updates, and then also excited to talk about some potential partnerships this summer, and to kind of give a sense of the trajectory of the farm startup. So, as you know, in 2019, I was first connected with, at the time, Public Works Director Trey, and got to know Trey and then Joe, and actually, I think Sheila might be, are you manning our slides, Jim, or is it?
I am not, Sheila. I am not, Sheila, Sheila's got.
So, and she can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks Sheila. And so you're seeing some images of like breaking ground, and breaking ground at the Salt River Preserve. So can I just get like a nod or a shaking of your head if you've been to the farm yet and seen what we've got going on over there? Okay.
I've been over there, but I'd still like to get a tour and warn it.
Okay, cool, good to know, gives me a little bit of a sense of just if you've made it or not. So actually Sheila, if you wouldn't mind just going back a slide. So the, the thing that's exciting, and actually to the second slide, is to think about where we were, and then, so this, this parcel then that we leased from you is five acres, and then where we're at now, and that's my husband and my truck. And it's just, that's where our greenhouse is, that's where everything got started, and then in the meantime, we've been really busy, so, thanks Sheila. So then, you know, at first year, any funds raised went towards infrastructure, and then eventually towards trying to have enough money on hand to be able to pay my first staff and then run our first youth program. So I was, wasn't really able to start paying myself or other people until 2021. But in 2020, any funding went towards the different things that you've seen on the farm, which is pretty cool, so we can keep going. The irrigation, I think, helps kind of tell the story of the trajectory, so, and helps me, I, so much of my focus is on irrigation now. So Annie, she is our youth program coordinator, we also have Becca, our farm manager, who many of you might know. And with both of their expertise and our team, we're able to work together to run our programs, run the farm, and I kind of hold big picture and hold infrastructure. And then that means that I'm also on the farm day-to-day checking out irrigation, making sure irrigation is running smoothly. So for me, this is just an analogy of like, kind of adapting as things shift. So in 2020, when I first started the farm, the filters on the left were adequate, but then in 2020, we had COVID, which did not contribute to the fires, but we had COVID fires, and then we had the mudslides afterwards, which meant that there was a lot of silt and sediment in the river, so then we needed sand media filters. So each thing within farming and running the operation is kind of like another step up then in learning what works, what do we need to shift and adapt to, and the irrigation for me is like a daily analogy to that, but then also kind of this big picture. We can keep going, Sheila. This is a nice image of what a field looks like before it's planted out, and then after it's planted out. So our fields, if you're out there now, are either undercover crops, so we don't want bare soil, or we start to lose moisture, we start to lose soil. So they're either undercover crop, or they're under tarps like this, and they've been prepped for the coming season so that we can immediately plant into them. And then the image there at the bottom is more of like an early July photo, so we're not, we're like far enough into the season to have some, some nice growth, but we're not full on quite yet in that photo. And then this is what y'all start to see in, in a few weeks, so we get started, the end of February is when we first seed in the greenhouse. And then in March, April is when we start to first seed into the soil. And peas are the first thing that go into the ground around St. Patrick's Day, like most people do out here. And then those are ready for our CSA, and I'll get into our CSA later. So I'm giving you a broad overview, but I'm, I'm weaving in here, you'll see, I think, the next slide, and you can go ahead and go to that, Sheila. No, this is our high tunnel, this is just a nice image, you can go to the next one. So I'm, I'm kind of weaving in like the trajectory of how we've developed and then where we're at currently. So this is three and a half acres enclosed in wildlife fencing. And then the infrastructure takes up about a half an acre, and then we've got about two and a half to three farmable acres. And so these plots on either side of the infrastructure are half acre plots. I just like that as a nice visual, it's a hundred and fifty by a hundred and fifty, so there's some strategy that goes into every part of the design of the farm. I worked on a farm after college and had a job that's really similar to Annie's. I then apprenticed to start and run my own farm someday and worked on other people's farms in the meantime. And so like even the length of our beds comes from me having worked on other people's farms and saying, you know, two hundred or four hundred foot beds are great if you're in production mindset, it's just farmers. And a hundred feet is short, it feels like a nice education space, but by the time you get to the end of a hundred foot bed, it's like you got into a rhythm and then you're done, and then you have to move on to the next task. A hundred and fifty is really nice for teaching, it's like the sweet spot for our job training program. Youth in the program and volunteers get into a rhythm, and then they just have to push themselves a little bit more, and then you get to the end of the bed. Typically, we work in pots. So, so it's just exciting to think about like where we started and then where we're at now. And then as part of this, talking a little bit about the financial stressors of what it means to, to run and start a business. So I have other friends who started farms or restaurants, and I remember calling them in year two and three, and just, I was losing so much sleep, like not knowing, is it gonna pencil out, am I still gonna be able to pay people tomorrow because I don't have enough financial data or enough projection to be able to have a lot of confidence in where this is going? And was just like, okay, I did the math in October, I hope it's working, now it's June. But the books were constantly tight, right? So I think the first four years, I never had more than thirty-five grand in the bank, and that was like at the height of the season because the cash flow is so tight in a startup operation like this. And when you're paying people, that's kind of hard to stomach. So I'll, I'll come, I'll come back to that, but you saw us at Farmer's Market, so in 2020, 2021, 2022, we were at the salt markets. Part of that was getting our word out about the farm. I also managed the Carbondale Farmer's Market in 2019 when I was starting the farm. And so I had done that to learn the lay of the land, who's doing what, what does a successful farmer's market look like, what does it need? And then I knew that our long-term vision was to run a CSA, and I'll, I'll talk again about that later. But markets typically for farms are scale, unless they're your sole focus, don't pencil out. So like, Boarden Farms is in Delta, and he sells primarily at markets and he has wholesale. And so he can make a grand at a market and that works for him. I honestly, I respect him and I think we need farmers like him. I don't think that farmers that are showing up to markets consistently are always doing the math about how much they had to spend to get in the door, and I think it's absolutely necessary that we have farms that are at markets, but I think at our scale, what I wanted to be able to explain to you today is why you saw us disappear in 2023. Because I was doing the math, and I was like, if we make at most two hundred bucks in a sale, in a day, at any given market, even Carbondale on a good day, we're making like seven or eight hundred bucks. I was like, that's, that doesn't pencil out for me to, to be doing the work to harvest, get people there, and then pay those people, and then bring stuff home and have to compost anything that got too hot. And so I started to back off of markets in general. My hope was to do Newcastle one year and Rifle one year, just to get our CSA name and youth program name out in the community. We didn't end up doing Rifle, and I think last year there was some contention around that, and I definitely wish that I had been able to have this conversation prior to, I think, the things that were hard about us not showing up at a market, but want to be able to give you a little bit of financial background about why that was, and then why, why that continues to be different for us. So like I said, I'll come back to CSA, but that goal is that we get people to the farm and pick up produce from us. So we have, we get to skip this going out piece. We're excited to be at town events, so we're really excited to partner with you guys in that way, and looking forward to that this year. And we're gonna be fine-tuning what our booth looks like and make sure that we can show up professionally and consistently. But I wanted to show you this image, so I think this kind of illustrates what I was telling you guys about tight finances. And at any given point in time, thank you Sheila, in the season, I'm looking at like such a tight margin, right? Because not only are, are we a farm and a nonprofit organization, but any funds coming in are accounted for in terms of like, I predicted that those would come in for, through sales, or they were fundraised for to fund specific aspects of what we do, either food access or youth programming. So this is from 2023, I don't have the data charted from 2024 yet, I had a board member make me do this because I would call him stressed out, and he was like, you need a cash flow chart because every year it works, and you need to trust that it works. So that's why we have this line chart. Now you can see like, you know, in January, my net revenue was five grand, February twenty-seven, and then it dips down, March, negative four, negative three, five, five, and then in July, I'm spending twenty-six grand. So by July, I'm particularly stressed out, especially in startup mode. At this point in the organization, the farm, I'm feeling more confident in our numbers and the data that I have and my finances projected for the following years, so I can bump up pay, I can bump up programming. But like this, just to give you a sense of where I was at in 2023 in July, I was looking at that, and I was like, oh God, I hope this pencils out through the rest of the season. So I'm really happy that it's 2025 now. In 2020, so this is 2022, 23, and then twenty-four predict, predictions. Just kind of showing you guys then, the, what you can see are like the spikes getting a little bit larger, right? Like I can, because I can predict the cash flow better, I can spend more knowing that more is coming in. And we can go to the next one, Sheila. So I'm trying to go, cover a lot of ground, so there's time for questions, I'm gonna keep buzzing through here. So then I said that our focus has been our CSA. We grow forty different crops and a hundred and twenty varieties of those crops. We really want people who are coming to the farm and accessing the farm to feel like they get all the vegetables that they could need or want during the farming season with us, and to feel like a part of a community when they come to the farm. We do grow some things in bulk, those go to the pantry system, or we try to hold on to them, or there are things that our CSA are moving through quickly. And then at the end of the season, for the last three seasons, we've consistently grown over thirty-five thousand pounds of produce each year. So when things come out of the field, they're weighed as they go into the wash station. Or if there's something really dirty, like beets, we wash them first and then we weigh them. But we want that harvest data, because it's, it's fun, it makes me proud, but it also like helps us know what to depend on, and then how to negotiate wholesale contracts. So these are examples of CSA shares, if you were to participate in our CSA and come to the farm, you would get a tote bag. Our farm, our market, our CSA is set up market style, so our produce is like kind of around a little, kind of like this. And you like walk around and you pick what you like and put it in the bag, there's limits on some things. If you get a box, it's pre-packed, and it might look like a combination of, of what we have. We can keep going. This is what CSA pickup looks like on the farm, so that's what I just described. And then you can see Barbetta, our Latino outreach coordinator here on the bottom left. And then some CSA members are like in the two corners, and they're doing you pick crops. So that's, there's crops that you pick yourselves that we don't want to pick, cherry tomatoes, green beans, peas, take a lot of labor but really fun for other people to engage with, and so that's what those you pick crops are, and then that's pickup. And people ride their bikes, which I think is really ambitious, just a nice visual of what pickup can be and the experience, we can keep going. And then some of the trajectory of our youth program, which is really fun, you can actually see Lucas in here. So Andrea's son, Lucas, was in our, our 2021 youth program. Twenty twenty-two, we started to, to get a little goofier, it looks like. Twenty twenty-three, we're up to eleven, and then we can go ahead to the next slide. Last year, Annie ran our biggest youth program to date with twenty youth, which is a large undertaking. And I think Jocelyn's in that photo, which is pretty cool, yeah. So last year, I also adopted my daughter in July, and I was MIA, and our team just hauled it down, kept everything running. I think that last year, we also were hoping to have more staff members, and we've had a really hard time getting committed staff that are the right fit in, on both regards, right, for them and for the, for the farm. And so this year, you may see us shift our programming a little bit. Our new, our program for new crew workers may look a little bit smaller, and we're trying to engage returners in a new way. And Annie is working on a summer internship option that we're gonna be piloting this year to keep youth who have worked with us in the past, providing them opportunities. So it's, we're constantly kind of trying to adapt the model to the amount of bandwidth we have, the funding we have, and then what are youth telling us that they want and need. And then Annie has done a really amazing job of lining up some really fun workshops. So you can see that there was actually an oil painting class with Dan Young, who's often out at the preserve doing like wildlife photography. And Annie partnered with him to do some, some art workshops. And then we do cooking, just taking out a cool tractor, yeah, we can keep going. And then this is the part where we talk about events, so I know I am taking up a decent amount of your time, but this is where we can talk about what exciting partnerships could exist this year. I found out that there may be some regulations around movie nights and like projecting movies based on town regulations, so we've done a movie night every year, and you can see it's pretty ad hoc. It's a white tarp that's strung up on our greenhouse, and then a projector that we're projecting a movie onto our greenhouse. So we'd love to either do something similar to this with the town's approval, or partner with the town and then have it look a little different. So I'm waiting to hear from town staff on what their wish would be for that, and then also what the approval would be for that. We have two dates in mind, and I am in touch with Nicole about some possible dates for, for that. So I'll be looking to hear what you guys come up with. But we do really love movie night, we feel like it gets a different group to the farm, it often introduces new families to the farm, and we're really trying to strategize around when we do it, so we have a couple Friday nights picked out in the summer for families who wouldn't be normally doing anything else, and it does not compete with any movie nights that the town's already doing. This is purely to get, get folks to the farm for the first time. And then community lunch is hosted by our youth program, please keep an eye out for that. It's a really cool way to come see the farm and see what the youth have accomplished. We can go to the next slide. Full brunch, also, we've, we've been doing this off and on, I think that every year, I'm like, are we gonna do it? And then we do, we don't do it, this, last year we did it, and I was like, this was worth it, it's really fun. We capped it at like, I think, thirty-five or forty people, so we let it be a small event, and that felt great. So I think we'll continue to try to keep that annual, and we can go to the next one. And then Jim and I were actually talking about partnering on a farm-to-table dinner, which sounds really fun and exciting. It's something that I have let go of in the last, again, like I talked about, twenty twenty-three, feel a little stressed, where do I trim things? Trimming the farmer's market, trimming farm-to-table dinner, because it, it does barely pencil out for us. But if we were to do it in partnership, I would feel less stressed out about filling seats or about paying for rentals or whatever it is, so I'd be excited to partner with you guys to put this event on. And then I think we could bring a lot of the community together around that, because actually getting people to events is, is a lot of work, as I'm, I'm sure you know, and so that's, that's a pretty big lift. So I'll be looking to hear from Nicole about a potential Friday or Saturday in September would be preferable for us. That's when the farm is the most abundant, like the most exciting to be on for that type of event. So if that's possible, we look forward to being in touch about that.
I went to the one in Carbondale, and it was awesome.
Oh, you did, you went to one of the painted big.
And everybody was like, oh, so cool, and I mean, I feel like a lot of people, like it gathered a lot of interest.
Thank you for, thank you for saying that, you know, and that was one of those things where I was like, oh, this is such a nice partnership. The restaurant offered, and they actually paid for the event itself, and then now you're out of business. So that restaurant won't be able to do that for us next year, and we're like, I don't know, find the right fit, but it was beautiful.
I'm sure there are a lot of restaurants who would be happy to do that.
Yeah, yeah, if you have someone in mind, let me know. But in the meantime, we would really like to do the one with the town, if you guys are up for that. And we can always make that as fancy or as casual as you want to go, which could be fun. I just think this is a nice image, it's like one of the last slides to end on, this is the elm tree as you enter the preserve that's there on the ditch line. I called it a cottonwood for the first four years until I had someone correct me, and I was really embarrassed. I know a lot about vegetables, I don't always know my trees. But this elm tree provides a lot of shade, and it's also, actually Sheila, can you go back? And it's actually where we, just like the farm kind of changes shape over the course of the season. So, you know, when it's covered in snow, which I wish it were covered in more snow right now, it's really beautiful out there. But then our youth program meets under the shade of that tree, in the fall, we pop garlic under that tree, and then we plant garlic, and that's like the last crop that goes in the ground and then comes out next July. So just feels full circle, and for me, kind of like a representation of our partnership with the town, and like how this farm being at the preserve is really meaningful for us. And we just like, we feel like a part of this space there, so we are really grateful for your support. And that's the end, thank you for listening, I hope I didn't take more than twenty minutes, I didn't wear my watch tonight.
No, look, you got, you have twenty six seconds.
All right, nailed it. Do you guys have any questions, comments?
Let me, let me just add that when we were, originally when Sarah and I got together to talk about this year and what we were gonna do, we kind of brainstormed some ideas that we had very possibly to draw attention not only to the farm, but then also to the preserve as well. And then we learned that she was kind of doing a movie night, and we started talking with Director Santano about could we partner up and have one of the movie nights at the farm, just again, to draw people out to the preserve. But my big one was, we should do the farm-to-table dinner that would be a fundraiser not only for the farm, but also for the preserve, and it would showcase it and bring people out there. We have a real gem in the preserve, and I think we need to showcase it as much as we possibly can and nurture it, and use any proceeds that we might be able to get to help the farm, but then also help the preserve in terms of some of the improvements that we're looking at doing. So that was kind of the catalyst for us to not only have this presentation tonight, kind of talk about where she started and where, where she is now, but really to start, hey, what's next?
I should also just mention that the Public Works Department's been really good to us. We've made like a lot of improvements this winter, even the roadway. We've made like a lot of improvements this winter, even the, um, the roadway into the farm was road base, and that's been huge. And then the propane tank will get stuck coming in and out of the green, anyway. But yeah, events, did any, Jim, did you want that to land on anything? Do you need, like, do you do like approval things here, or how does that work? No?
Not really. I think, you know, unless unless there would be an objection from anybody from the board, I think we'll continue planning to see if we can come up with a movie night that works, but then also really start planning for some farm-to-table dinner to showcase the whole preserve and farm.
Yeah, let's focus on how, not if.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cool.
Right, we're, we're pretty much a yes. Just tell us what it is.
Okay.
Nice.
There you go.
Okay. That was good. That was great.
Very much.
Yeah, any questions?
I've got one question.
Yeah.
I know, and I don't remember if it was last year, there was a propane tank issue. Has that all been resolved and everyone's happy?
Yeah, we are definitely happy.
Can we just leave it at that, please?
I think we had a grandfather ring situation.
Yes.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Yeah, and then we just had that filled, and they're more expensive when they're larger.
Yeah.
There's more propane, it's a nasty stuff. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Cool. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, good night.
Yeah. Good to be here.
And Sarah, I have your USB.
I know, that thing is tiny.
The smallest USB I've ever seen.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we'll stick around a few minutes before we go.
Okay. Uh, next up is the Mountain Waste, uh, update and annual diversion report.
Good evening.
Feel free to use the tissues, too.
Doug and Bill.
How's everybody been? Yeah.
Been doing well.
Of course, Doug, Bill. Um, so I'm, annually, we like to talk about diversion, and then we want to bring you guys up to speed on. I think we might have mentioned when we were here last time that our parent company has been in the process of putting putting a Murph up or planning to put a Murph up down in Denver, and and we've got some specific updates on that. We just want to fill you guys in on and then talk about the upcoming contract.
Okay.
Well, um, back to what you said, our job is no news is good news. We, we try to be, in a perfect world, you don't notice what we do. You know, the cans go out, cans come back, trash is picked up, and I think we've this year executed that in a, in a robust manner. Um, the diversion report this year is, it's amazing. Silt has been steady at seventeen percent, about one, two percent higher than the state average, uh, equal to your cities on either side, both running at about seventeen percent. Again, Colorado state average is sixteen percent. Everybody's trying to get better at that. I think we've, we've done the education. Those who are taking advantage of the recycling product are doing what they're supposed to do, um, trying to get more education out, trying to get more people to download the app so they they can understand what can be recycled and where it goes. Also, the reminder of when your trash day is and when holidays come up, sends you texts, says, hey, don't forget, tomorrow's your trash day, or don't forget, your trash day is delayed one day because of a holiday. Does everybody here, have you all downloaded the app on your phones? There is an app, Mountain Waste, waste.com on the, on the Google app. Sign up, put your address in, and it tells you, it sends you a reminder. It says, hey, tomorrow's trash day. We've been, we've put information out, we've asked, try to get more people. If we get to a certain number, we can then send notifications out, hey, we're running two hours late on your something, on your trash day. We had a truck go down. So people don't worry that they're always here by ten o'clock wise, and it's ten-thirty wise and here. We get those calls, because the guys are actually very steady. Every once in a while, we, Sheila gets a call, hey, it's eleven o'clock. Hey, we had a front tire. We're gonna get there.
Is there a link to that on the town's website?
Um, on the app, yes, I believe so.
Um, on our website?
Well, no, on ours.
Uh, I, I-
Is there a link on the town's website so that people could go there and?
I don't believe there is.
I don't believe there is.
I know that there's a trash schedule. All of the shows like the pickup days.
There, but that might be a great page to say, if you want more detailed deliveries, go here.
We have some limitations to our website.
We also have the-
Are you sure you want to have that conversation?
Not entirely, but we do recognize we have some limitations to our website.
On the app also has the Waste Wizard. You type in a product, it tells you if it's recyclable or trash or compostable. It's kind of, hey, what is this? Is this pizza box something? Is this piece of plastic something? Which way to go with it? Just to try to get that education out there. Um, if you look at your diversion report, you'll notice a couple of months that have higher numbers. Those are the months with five weeks. That's why those numbers on the on the volumes are higher. March and May and what, November have five weeks. So there's significantly more pickups, but your your percentages don't really change that much. We can tell you, of course, that in June, you all drank a lot of beer. You can tell as the recycling rates go up, those are usually bottles, so doesn't make, makes a little sense. Want to see if you all have any questions for us.
And and just, just to point out, I know it's just data, but just kind of the bottom there, you know, we average here about eleven-hundred-and-fifty-one household customers. Fourteen-hundred-and-forty tons of trash and about three, almost three hundred tons of recycling. If you turn that into pounds, it's, you know, two-point-eight million pounds of trash and five-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand pounds of of recycling material for that net of kind of a seventeen percent diversion. And you guys are kind of been clicking pretty consistent there.
Yeah, no, it's been for years. It's, you know, we come to you before you every year, and it's within one percent.
So is the seventeen percent, is that as far, like, is that how much we're recycling?
It is.
That's, and so
Of the product that we-
The state average is sixteen percent.
That is correct.
In a perfect world, if everybody recycled exactly the way they were supposed to, what would the percentage be?
The highest rates in the country are in the thirty-fives, Boulder.
Places where you get a big fine if you don't store your trash, right? Stuff like that.
And the the, not the incentive, the mix, the tenant mix is what I always call it, is more inclined to recycling. There's a little bit more peer pressure.
Sure.
Is, is that thirty-five percent when you've got the three different, you've got
Compost also.
Waste, compost, and recyclables.
So you have a composting program also?
So you're adding a third can of generally heavy material.
You guys see the compost probably be heavier there?
Yeah, for sure.
And this is curiosity. I'm just curious, like, if everybody recycled exactly the way they were and composted.
Well-
Older particularly, there's a university that itself could
Oh, gosh.
Could move that needle, right?
Right.
If they changed their own incentive structure in and of its, it's its own population.
And and a, and a very committed population.
Yes.
Yeah, and I've talked to people who lived in a very high populated area where the rules were really a lot more strict, just so crowded, you know, so, but just my curiosity. But seventeen, I mean, that's a point higher than the state average.
Absolutely. And it's been rock solid steady for years.
Maybe room for improvement.
You know, and the journey for your recycling, of course, you know, Bill talked that is collective here. We are currently delivering, uh, when yours is mixed with everybody else's. So from the, our, our service area, Mountain Waste is parachute to Aspen. We're delivering just short of nineteen tons of recycling per day into the Denver market from this valley.
How many truckloads does that translate to?
So that's five a week. So we get seventeen to nineteen and a half tons on a truck. And we, we've been averaging one truck a day.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes we have to catch up and we'll run two out of there, but it averages five a week.
How much of your recycling is contaminated? Just a rough idea.
Oh.
I know, I see it. I, I, I see it in my neighborhood. Their one can gets full, so they throw their garbage bags in the other one. I know, you know, it's, I'm gonna end up going to the dump.
Less, less than you think. We, we get penalized, you know, they, they, when it's spread on the floor, the, there's somebody that visually inspects what we've dumped on the floor, and based on that number, they say this can, load is contaminated by X percent. As as a whole, you can speak better to that, because you're the one who pays the bill for the extra, they charge extra.
Yeah, they'll, so, so the way it works for us is we, we pay a certain amount per ton for them to process down in Denver. So I pay to haul it down there, and then I pay to have it processed, and then they'll there's some rebate, you know, the market for recycle is up and down, so we get paid some on cardboard, maybe on some metal, but then the cost of us processing it, we'll have maybe a negative, so we always end up paying. I don't get a rebate on recycle by the time they process it. So maybe, I'm trying to think of some of the numbers we've gotten lately from down there at Republic. Nineteen percent, maybe? It's, it's not horrible. And and they'll just, they'll just, they'll take it out of our rebate, so like I said, we end up paying them about fifty or sixty bucks a ton to process it, net. So Sheila, when you pop to the next one, please. Hi, Sheila, by the way, over there. Uh, so-
Hi, Bill.
Hi, Sheila. Um, so just, just some highlights of of our Murph that we're about to break ground on. I think last year, we were still in the approval stages. This just gives you a rendering of what our Murph's gonna look like down in Commerce City, and this will be owned by our parent company, Waste Connections. We're putting about forty-four million dollars into the facility. There's gonna be a lot of state-of-the-art optical sorting in there. But we will have probably eighty to ninety employees working at that plant. Uh, the goal is, once that's up and operating a hundred percent, um, we'll have the capability of processing about two-hundred-and-forty-million pounds of recycling every year. So we're excited. Finally got everything approved, and I, from what I understand, within the next thirty to forty-five days, they'll be breaking ground, and they plan to have it operating early twenty-six. Uh, we're hoping to have it by the end of this year, but it looks like there was a lot of a lot of process to get things approved and kind of delayed the project, but we are finally have the final drawings, and we're gonna start work on that. So we're pretty excited. Um, and then all, one hundred percent of our recycle, then we'll go down to our own, own facility and we're working on feeding it. Any, any questions on that? I mean, we'll keep you guys posted as that transpires, and we'll be proud to show it off once, once we get it rolling.
So, and will that result in cost savings for us, because you don't have to pay as much on the recycling?
I hope. I mean, it's hard to tell, you know, a year out.
Once you pay off the forty-four million dollars.
Yeah, exactly. That would take a bit. But but we are paying, you know, you know, another person to to process for us, so I would, I would assume there'll be some internalization we'll be able to take advantage of. But again, that's a year out, so we'll have to kind of, kind of wait and see.
Yeah.
And Dr. Sawyer, we, we are in contract for pricing increase agreements with Mountain Waste, so even if you guys do like a project costly as like this, we, uh, we have negotiation and contracts that we would be looking into.
There you go.
Good segue.
Yeah, yeah. So I wanted to wrap up, if, if there's no more questions on, on the recycling, um, we, uh, our current two, as you guys well know, we did a five-year, two, two-year extensions. This, the end of the two-year extension is coming up at the end of July, so about five months out. And we would like to propose, or at least throw it out there, is, yeah, we can go through the, uh, new RFP, or we could talk about maybe doing another extension with the same terms that we have on the current contract. We'd come in and talk to Jim, maybe, maybe looking at doing another three-year extension and and I think some advantages for the town on that could be, number one, still managing that controlled cost increases that we have in the current contract. If we go out for RFP, the risk would be is prices would probably go up significantly higher. We just went through this in rifle a year ago. Um, we are five years in, and they thought they'd test the waters, and, you know, we ended up being about fourteen and a half percent higher on the new pricing. And we are the lowest bidder. Um, your current contract is a maximum of a five percent increase, all based on CPI, which is currently maybe two-point-eight percent, I think.
I believe that last year we were two, three percent?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you're, right now, it's like two-point-eight, nine percent. So, um, I, I, I believe we continue to have solid service down here. We've certainly, it's really quiet coming from the office here, which is always a good sign for us. So we had a, we had talked to Jim a bit, uh, and thought, well, if, if the town doesn't want to go through the whole rigmarole of putting together an RFP and 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 rolling the dice and seeing where it rolls out, we could certainly talk about doing another extension on the current contract, if, if you guys are interested in that. So we wanted to put it out there.
You don't have to make that decision tonight.
No, 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 no.
By any means, take it under advisement, and we can schedule a time to discuss whether you want to go ahead and do an RFP, or you want to try to work towards an extension. I will just say that with the lack of complaints that we get, I would kind of stay right where we are, um, because it seems to be working.
And we figured now we have time, and it's like, you know how fast the time goes. It's like, well, it's February, so we still have time to talk about this and figure out what you guys would like to do.
The last thing that I would say is that we have added the app to two places on the website.
Oh.
Well done, sir. Wow.
Well, since I asked you, did it?
And, and the royal we is actually Director Santano sitting in our office right now.
Typing feverishly as I asked the question.
It did happen.
And that's, that's all we had.
Okay. It does say documents attached proposed increase. So is there a proposed increase?
No.
Okay.
We were actually looking if with an extension, not to do an increase for you.
Yeah, you guys are still set till the end of July. I think when we came in, gosh, last summer already and talked about that, so, yeah.
Okay.
No new rates to talk about today.
All right.
I would lean towards an extension, but I'd like to know more about rifle's process and outcomes. If we could get that as homework, what they're able to share.
Okay.
Sure. Thanks, guys. Very appreciate your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good to see you all again.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is the sterile property reacquisition. Now we'll turn it over to manager man.
I'm gonna turn it right back over to you guys. Um, we had this discussion at the last meeting, and you wanted it on the agenda again this evening. And we're looking for direction on what you want to do, uh, and where you want to take this. I can say that we have, uh, had nothing submitted at this point, correct, Director Santano?
Correct.
Okay. So we haven't received any documents, um, showing what the plans are. There was some contact between the, uh, uh, current owner and, uh, the new hotel owner, Mr. Gotem. Um, I'm not sure what that conversation was.
To town manager's point, last meeting, talking about having that as a prime space, that really caught my attention for us to maybe think of a more broader way on a master plan kind of way for the town, and really think what that space could potentially be truly used for, since granted the opportunity for that, it's not making strides to give that option more thought.
Well, I mean, last meeting, I said, I doubt they're ever gonna do anything, but I'm willing to give them ninety days just to do something, get the ball rolling. You know, talk to the town, submit something, and I'm, I'm still of that opinion.
You know, but they said that medium will have something in the next morning, and see where that went.
They said they had plans.
Yeah, they had plans, and we'd have it the next day, wasn't it, or a couple days later? You see where that went to. Couple days of come and gone.
I keep coming back to the mindset of we're delaying the inevitable.
Yeah.
We might as well just start the reacquisition process. For whatever they wanted to do, they lacked the means, they lacked the understanding of the legal contexts as they admitted during our last meeting, the policies and the regulations, that this is gonna die on the vine.
And the environment for what they were wanting to do has changed drastically.
And there's no demand side of the market.
Yeah.
Like, it's, it was a great idea, but it's still just an idea, and this is too valuable. And this is too valuable, an opportunity for us to continue to wait for them to get it right.
Ideas don't put sales tax in the bank.
And there's a lot of other development going on in that area that is well timed for something that is potentially a more viable idea. I don't know what that idea is, but I'm sure other parties out there have some, and this is what's stopping them from coming to the table, potentially.
I think if we wait too long, we could miss out on a good opportunity.
They're, they're going to go to one of our neighboring communities because that land and that opportunity is available to them.
He was serious. He knew, he knows we have meetings every two week, you know, he would at least call or something tonight and say, hey, I apologize, whatever. We ain't heard nothing, so, like you said, it's, the inevitable is going to happen. Just how long do we drag it out?
The sooner it starts, the sooner it ends, and again, we can get it in front of more viable business opportunities for this community.
I say we get the process started and
I agree with that.
I think, and it's not going to happen overnight anyhow, the process, but at least get it rolling and that way if something does happen, we're not sitting waiting again for another tomorrow, that's not going to happen.
The other thing I was going to say, I mean, I agree with everything everyone's saying, but I also think Silt has changed too. I mean, when we offered them these terms, Silt hadn't grown and wasn't growing the way it is now in that area. So we put, we extended ourselves in a way to encourage development that we really don't need so much now, right? I mean, we don't need, so I just, just another reason, I think, to agree with what everyone's already saying. Do you need direction?
I think we probably need a motion. And I guess what I would say is, we'll get the formal process started, also inquire from the ownership group if they've had any successful contacts with the neighboring hotel owner. I mean, if, if, I, I guess my thought is, is if they actually have a deal structured that in shorthand gets the property into the hands of someone who can use it, then maybe we would reevaluate, but we'll bring you that information if it exists.
But we do have first right on the, on transfer of it, correct?
That, that's correct.
And I'm not saying I wanted, that we would have to do that, but just that way we could at least get some sense of what the plan is before we just allow that transaction to take place. So he's not buying it to sit on it for however long.
Correct, and Jim and I have had some discussions around kind of how we would think about structuring that. Not to get too far ahead of something that may or may not have happened, but if you remember, the new purchaser of the hotel has committed to a very major remodel of the hotel, which will last about two years. And so, his plate may be pretty full for a period of time. And, you know, our, our thinking back and forth has been that if the property made its way into the hotel's ownership, we'd probably want to give him a little bit longer period of time to bring that to fruition. But, those are facts that we're speculating on, so. We'll start the formal process if you so move, and we'll come back to you with more information if there's something worthy of discussion.
So I have a question for Director Centeno. So, building permit for commercial, that would be a year, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Depending on what the extent of the permit entailed, but yeah.
Okay, okay, so within that year, I mean, can they, they can sit on that till, you know, day three sixty-four and then do something? Okay.
They would have to renew it.
Never renew it, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, I was exaggerating, but then, then they can pull a permit and just not do anything if they wish until the very end and, you know, renew or, or, you know, actually start building.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if, if they have a construction loan, it doesn't suit them to wait on it that long.
Exactly, yes.
We haven't had that happen up to this point.
Okay.
But, I mean, yeah, they, they could.
And I drove by there the other day and that meter is just stuck in the ground, there's nothing there, there's no meter, there's no wires to it, there's no box. It's just sitting by that power pole about eight feet out, stuck in the dirt. There is no electric, there is no power electricity to it. Tells you where that went, like they said. It just stuck, I drove by just to see and it's just about ten feet away from that power pole, it's just thrown in, it's just a temp power pole, but there's no meter, no wiring, anything, so. Kind of tells you what they told, he said they had one there, and that's not true neither, so.
Yeah, because I'm, I thought I was going to last week, I was ready to, you know, require it two meetings ago, so.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to begin the reacquisition process of the Estera property.
Second?
Okay. Motion by Mayor Protem to begin the reacquisition process for the Estera property. Second to adjutant post, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the establishment of a canine unit within the Silt Police Department.
And I apologize, I did receive a memo from Chief Kite and I saw a squirrel in the process of sending it to all you all, so there is a post-packard document. Sorry, chief, I did, I saw a squirrel. But this, you know, just a little background and then I, Chief is here this evening to answer questions, et cetera. But we did receive a overture from the county regarding a canine that they have, that they have separated with the handler that they had, that originally, they were interested in giving it away, but I think a few things have changed along the way that now there might be a cost to it. But, in a discussion regarding the operations of the police department, we felt that, you know, the opportunity to have a canine unit at a low entry cost was probably something that we should at least entertain. And so, we are bringing it up to you as the board to have a general discussion of whether this is something that you would want to pursue. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief to talk a little bit more about the canine side of things.
I would start this off with, no one's more surprised than I when this came across my desk. Because we had had, during our budget meeting, had been asked if we were looking at doing another canine, at which time I said no, just do the sure cost behind it. Garfield County has lost their canine handlers due to separation and whatever else they may have going on. And Silt has enough of, a reputation of being a professional department, a responsible department. They brought it to us to see if we'd be interested in resuming our canine program. Big part of that is due to Lieutenant Grunbeck, he was a canine handler with them for, I think, three years, it's in your memo. And he's well respected in that, with that unit. At first, it was, it came across as, need find a home for the dog. Okay, we, I have something I can work with. As you go farther up the food chain to the big bosses, it's, we're going to be looking at approximately ten thousand dollars for the dog and all the equipment that goes with it. In the long run, it's significantly cheaper than starting up a new program. It's already a trained dog, it's already got all the equipment that goes with it. I was still, okay, give me more information. So we dug into it again, the overall cost, we're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars for the canine, for the equipment to go in the cars. And I tacked in a couple of thousand for dog food. Not that they eat that much, but prefer to have it in there. Excuse me. I backed the program. A canine is no different than any other tool we have. And as a chief, that's the way I have to look at it. It's a tool. It's a living, living, breathing tool. This particular dog is a dual purpose. It's not only drugs, but it's a sniffer, as in tracking, and it's also a biter. We use canine in our town, calling in other agencies. I'm guessing approximately probably a dozen times a year. Mostly sniffing drugs, sniffing cars. And we've taken some substantial amount of drugs off the streets using it. I have some questions here. Would other agencies have access to this animal and the handler? Absolutely. We are also small up here in the western slope, we run off mutual aid. It's really no different than when they had the dog, we call, they'd come and help. Our SWAT team, when we call them, we don't charge them, the spear team. We have people that call for our drone program. We don't charge them. We all work together as one. Not everybody can have everything. It's just not feasible. We have a young lady that applied with us about a week ago. She's actually a veteran canine handler. And she'd be, she said she'd be one that happy to take over the program and work as needed. Some of the officers have put some feelers out into the public of kind of their thoughts and such. We've had a couple of companies that wasn't, you know, would you be one to dominate, was how much do you need? Type of interest.
Would that be a one-time donation or an ongoing annualized donation?
That I don't know. I guess, if you go and ask somebody for twenty-five thousand, would you go back and re-ask them again? Because I didn't want this program to take away from the many, many, many generous businesses we have in this town for shop with the cop and bicycle rodeo, that type of thing. But, talking with folks, I don't foresee that happening. I think, like I said, I, as a chief, I have to look at it as, this dog is a piece of equipment. And it's really no different than the less lethal program we have, or the rifles, or pepper spray, or anything else. You don't need it that often, but when you do need it, it's great to have.
No, you said you used it about twelve times in the last year. If we had it here in Silt, would you, would you have opportunities to use it more often?
I would say yes. There's a lot of transporting of narcotics coming up and down I-70. There's no reason if we had it here in town, we couldn't run some of our own operations on our mile stretch of highway to, you know, cut down on some of that trafficking coming through.
So, what is the cost and timeframe to train someone? And the reason I'm asking that is, you know, the town of Silt, we really don't have the best track record on keeping our officers because we're so small. So if we lose one, there we sit now with a dog and we've got to start training again and spend that money again. Or else we got a handler that's trained to go make more money someplace else. But, I mean, I mean, that's, that's one of my questions, is, is, are we only going to have one or two people? Or, so if the one leaves, we're kind of stuck with the dog that we've got to start all over again?
No, that's a great point, that's a great point. I've been told this particular dog has got approximately ten years left on him, seven to ten. Which for a canine, from what I've been told, is a pretty good turnaround. If this particular officer is hired, they're still in the testing process. Yes, there would be a secondary officer training with them, so we would always have a backup if need be. I've also put out, which I have to run through the town administrator and the town attorney of, if we do continue with this program, to sign an employment contract. You're, it's, you're here for the duration of the dog. Because I thought the same thing.
I mean, that's, that's kind of, I'm just thinking out loud about that because I'm just thinking, is this, are we getting our money back? Is it an investment for the town if that, if it sets, you know, if one leaves and then we don't? What is the cost, what does it cost to train an officer? Do they have to go someplace or?
They do. And I've actually brought someone in tonight, and she's a canine officer, and she can answer a lot of these questions for you. Like I said, we had one here for a couple of years, and that was substantially expensive because it was sending someone out of state for, I believe, a month and a half.
I don't remember.
And then, and that's just training the officer to handle the dog. And then, the dog is X amount of dollars also. So, give me one moment, please.
Chief, I would also note Lieutenant Grunbeck is, he's on the
Yeah, he is online.
He's online.
Oh, he is online, okay. Please sit down.
Sorry. This is my first one, so. Hi, my name is Haley Herbert, I am the canine handler. I handle Hera, which is the dog that everybody is debating on whether or not to purchase, so. Excuse me, I, yeah, this is my first one, so bear with me.
Trustees, see if I had to ask what, what they're looking at for a cost for the dog and the cost of training a handler.
So, with a brand-new dog and a brand-new handler, at least the class that I went to, it is ten thousand dollars for the dog, which comes untrained. So the only thing they know what to do when they come over here is to bite, if you're looking at a dual purpose. Everything else from narcotics, bomb, tracking, and obedience is trained by the handler. The handler training on top of the ten thousand for the dog would be five thousand, so. I've already gone through that training, it's just one-time training, me and Hera are already paired together. So whatever the sheriff's office is asking at that point, you're getting a fully trained, certified dog, and then you wouldn't have to send me to go do that again, so.
Is there any retrofitting to the cars you have to do?
There is. There's a canine cage, which that is part of that twenty-five thousand, ten thousand and change. The back of the car is made for the dog. With air conditioning heaters, certain padding, so the dog doesn't get bounced around. Automatic locks, lock releases, alarms. So if a car gets too hot, too cold, sets off the alarm. For the protection of the animal.
And the dog goes with the handler then at home, stays there?
And that, yeah, that's one of my concerns, because years ago, we had an officer who was a handler and, and he, he did a, a really good job with the training and handling and everything with that dog. But then, he left and the dog went with him, so then we were out all that money for training and dog and everything. And that's, that's why I'm hesitant, because I don't want to see a repeat of that.
The dog went with that particular handle, handler because the dogs was extremely sick. And since then, the dogs had multiple surgeries to remove tumors. It's the reason we chose to release the dog with the handler, because of the mounting medical bills that that particular dog was getting.
Okay. And then that, that brings up another question. What happens if this dog, all of a sudden, same, same scenario happens to this one?
It's a piece of equipment.
Yeah.
It's no different than if we crunch a car or, you know, have him be involved in a shooting and they take the weapon that you'll never see back.
I mean, I get that, yes, you, you can't predict the future, I'm just saying.
But it's, like I said, it's a piece of equipment, once it goes down, it goes down. We can't tell for when that's ever going to happen.
So, does the town, Mr. Bay, for the attorney, does the town assume any liability? So if she's got the dog at her house, visitor comes over and gets bit, does the town assume any responsibility for that? I'm just, I mean, I-
I, I'm, I'm guessing the answer is yes. And we could inquire of SIRS, uh, to make sure that's an insured risk, which I have to imagine it is, given the number of communities that have, you know, canines.
Just a question, I just thought about it.
I mean, it's the same thing, taking a pistol home or, you know, your taser and-
That leads me to my question.
But it's property of the town.
So are those.
Yeah, those are too, by office.
And I mean, if there's a level of unpredictability with the animal, whether it's medical bills or different things that I think can raise concerns. And then my understanding is that if the town, like the, the handler can be held personally liable for unreasonable use of force, as could the police chief. But in addition to that, I think perhaps the town and the board could actually be held liable for if we don't have a consti-, uh, uh, canine policy that meets constitutional muster. That's a concern that I have that was raised.
That's, that's a great point, which I started looking into also. Yes, excessive use of force. That is no different if it was the dog or an officer.
Right.
We are held to a strict standard of what is necessary use and what goes beyond that.
Sure. Can a, can the dog tell the difference between like someone who's having an epileptic seizure versus someone who's being evasive and has criminal intent?
This is where the trained handler comes in. And whether the dog is there first on scene, the handler is a trained officer. We, we take classes and trainings and everything else on different scenarios such as that. And the dog is not going to light into inside, into anybody unless given the command. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. And the policy at the sheriff's office as well, it kind of breaks down when to use the dog. So that's going into violent misdemeanors and violent felonies. So it's kind of similar as to if I am going to tase somebody, like somebody, I'm not going to tase somebody that's just, has a felony fraud warrant. So you're getting them out on certain crimes. And then with that, that's what comes into all of the training that we do weekly. Hera is very, Hera and, and most canines are very social dogs and they have specific commands for that. So I would never get her out if somebody was having a seizure or kind of having a fit. Because she, she might look at that and be like, oh, that person's really weird.
Yeah, and like I, I have a lot of concerns about, you know, police officers are supposed to be trained now to de-escalate the situation.
Correct, yes.
And an attack dog is, you know, the person might not respond appropriately. And then, and also, I mean, we're, we're supposed to be moving toward non-lethal. And I mean, there are cases where these dogs have literally ripped people's faces off and stuff, so.
There are, there's a couple well-documented cases, four in particular, that we study when we're training the dogs. Stemming from nineteen eighty-four, I believe the first one is, it's Robinette v., I would have to look at the case while I have it written down. But there's four well-documented cases where it was an accidental, accidental death. Whereas with the taser, there's over a thousand documented since two thousand and six for accidental deaths. So it does happen. She is considered, considered non-lethal. It's definitely not a lethal tool on that, on that curriculum that we use. Whereas if, if I'm going lethal, I'm going to pull my gun. So I'm not going to pull the dog unless it's kind of a distraction tactic.
So, but then it kind of comes down to like the cost first, so like for a taser versus a dog and stuff like that.
Uh, for like the liability and stuff.
Well, and like how much it costs to maintain. I mean, as far as one tool versus another, I think a living, a living tool is more expensive.
Yeah, she's definitely a little bit more maintenance. You did mention earlier on the de-escalation, we've been running on the road since April of twenty twenty-four. We've had multiple stats just within the county and it's throughout municipalities as well. Eleven of those were considered patrol. And that means whenever I pull her out for like a felony or violent misdemeanor. One of those was a live bite. Ten of those were when the person has given up. So that's just me getting her out and giving those commands. So that saved multiple officers from having to go hands-on with somebody that was otherwise violent and didn't want to give up. The minute that dog gets out and starts barking, they were like, I'm good, which is fair.
But, and so some dogs are used to sniff drugs and things like that. But then there are dogs that are actually intended to chase down, bite, and attack a human being.
Yes, ma'am. She does, she does both.
Right.
Um, so the dual purpose, which is what she is, is she is the apprehension, which is the track down and bite. Um, she does tracking, so she tracks people. And then she does narcotics. So she's meth, heroin, and cocaine. So she does all.
What's the nearest dog around us? Is there another one? Glenwood or Rifle or?
Rifle just got one, it was in the paper list.
Yeah, Rifle's got one, but it's not been trained yet. And Newcastle got a puppy. But actually, a working dog is Gobo Glenwood.
Yep, yep. And he's dual-purpose as well. So he does all three things that Hera does. They do not do call-outs very often, which is why we kind of snagged all those deployments from him, so.
How, how, what, what is the age of this dog?
She is two and a half years old. So she'll be three in May. Um, and she's a Belgian Malinois, small, little thing. She's, I think, forty-five pounds.
Well, I, I mean, as, on behalf of the town, my main concern is, do we have, do we need a written policy in place that we need to create to avoid liability, obviously?
Absolutely. And I'm sure if I contact Sheriff Lario, he'd be more than happy to share their canine
Oh, yeah.
policy with us. So we have to, no use reinventing the wheel. Just take off Garfield County, put Silt, and put it in our policy manual.
Sure. And I mean, I think you can tell I have some other concerns. To me, the idea of using a dog to apprehend a suspect is on the more barbaric end of things. That's my opinion and that's where I stand. But on behalf of the town, I think more generally, my concern is just that I wouldn't want the town to be liable for a police brutality that is unreasonable. And then we're not, we don't have the proper procedure in place to protect our citizens from that.
And like I said, I absolutely have, we don't have any piece of equipment within SLPD that doesn't have a policy for it.
Right.
Uh, for, for just that reason. And if we do continue with this program, which I'm encouraging the board, that I think it'd be an asset to the town. If this program does go through, I'd like to put on a demonstration of the dog's capabilities. And maybe ease some concerns.
Have it attack a trustee.
I will not be perpetuated.
Whichever one, whichever one voices the most, you know, trepidation about it. I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
Just slip something in his pocket.
I have a major that I can volunteer. Because he's an adult now, so I guess I can't volunteer.
We don't want you as a board member.
That wasn't in the job description, Jim? Occasional chew toy?
As a sign.
Here, you'll be, you'll be a volunteer.
Volunteer Jerry.
So I, I have-
Jerry's not going to run away.
Two more serious-
Surgery lately.
I have two more serious questions, and the first one's a two-parter. You and, officer, I apologize, I don't recall your name.
You're okay, Haley is good.
Haley, thank you. You and the dog are a match set, so saying yes to the dog is effectively saying yes. You are the applicant indicated in the note.
She is.
So if we're saying yes to the dog now, we're saying yes to the officer that is the-
She still has the testing process to go through. If she's-
There, it's conditional, but just to be clear, if, if we're saying yes to the dog, and you've been working with the dog since April of last year, saying yes to one is saying yes to both, practically speaking.
Right. Right now, the Garfield County Sheriff's Office has offered us the dog. They offered us the dog before Haley dropped an application. They'd still be willing to sell us the dog. It's just we would be starting with a new handler.
Who, who else would be training?
Officer Porwood.
Oh, okay.
He's new, but he's got a lot of, this, this is, program takes a lot out of, out of, out of training. There's trainings and a lot of legal updates. It, there's a lot behind it. And before we approve, have him move forward as a handler, he's got to show that he can do the trainings, attend the classes, and move forward, which is going to be probably a little over a year. There's, it's just, now here's a dog. Because as she was saying, there is a lot of legislature and case law behind canines that handlers have to be extremely proficient on.
But if this officer is in training, he's not out on the street. Correct?
Correct.
So there's operational costs.
Yeah. And that's really no, that training is no different than everything else that the state has us go through with, with all the rest of the trainings that we do. Now, we go through legal updates, canine officers go through legal updates, and legal updates for, for canine. It's that step above.
So my, my second question, and I'm not trying to minimize the value of the animal. If, if we view the, the canine officer, I'm sorry, the, the canine itself as being a tool, as it was described, we didn't have this in our budget.
Correct.
So what SLPD line item comes out of the budget to offset the cost of the, the vehicle updates and any associated officer training? If it's a tool, what tool are you going to give back in order to get this tool? Or I shouldn't say give back, but not get this year.
Right, not, not.
If it's a tool, let's think along fiscal lines. And what is the true value in terms of what SLPD is willing to not get in lieu of this animal and its partner officer?
Well, we are losing an officer too, not to-
Correct.
Yes, so that, having someone capable applying that the police is looking into hiring quickly without having to get someone brand-new, training, and going through the entire program, that saves costs.
Absolutely, but we approved a budget a month, two months ago that did not have this in it.
Well, there was talk of some sponsorships and some different things that would offset those costs without it having to come out of the budget positively.
Sure. If this is approved, I'd be forward with the sponsorship or donations. And then I would start trimming our budget to cover it. Unfortunately, last year was a rough year due to vehicles getting totaled and other things that came along.
Yeah, but insurance covers the vehicle.
Portions of it.
In, in theory.
But I'd be more than happy to trim back to make this program happen. We can always cut stuff here and there. As for, I know a question that came up of replacing, not doing the program and replacing old, older outdated equipment. Well, we've already replaced that, or in the process of. I'm proud to say SLPD has got some of the nicest equipment in the valley.
And to be, thank you. I don't think, I think we can find the space for this in the budget as an additional item. I was just being the devil's advocate in terms of the tool analogy.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
If we're, if we're using this dog in lieu of another tool, then the cost should have an offset. It's not, in terms of the SLPD's overall budget, that's significant a portion of it if we did have to add it.
And we have had an officer go out on medical. That she won't be returning. And that's the position we're trying to fill now.
And to pro them, Harry, Han's point, there's a cost value and offset that you were saying. But then there is a, a value that will bring potentially to the community if they have an additional tool that can potentially get closer to certain crimes. More so if it's just a human force. If they get a calling of a suspicion of drugs, now they have something that sees beyond eyes only. So then it just builds on the value portion of it. Like that would be the added value of having a canine added to the team. The service that they can do.
Cut gas costs, bicycles one day a week. Save on gas, cut bicycles one day a week for your-
Then you have to buy bicycles and you have to have a bicycle policy and you have to train on the bicycles.
Bicycle license and all that, so.
And the dog pulls the bicycle.
You can't do four-ten, that's not going to work.
Hey, you mentioned, you said something about tracking. What, what kind of, I mean, would that be like, say, somebody's kid wanders off? They, she's trained for that. I'm just curious.
She, so how we track, so Bloodhounds track people scent. She tracks disturbance, basically. So whatever the freshest disturbance in whatever terrain that is, that's what she tracks. I use her for apprehension tracking.
More somebody jumps out of a car and takes off through a field, she'll be, she can-
Oh, she's got it. We, we actually had a very successful track in October. It was October sixth. Officer Martin was actually on that. I was employed with Garfield County at the time, obviously with that. It was a suspect with five felony domestic violence warrants. He had ran from us for the sixth time, I believe it was. And he hid in very thick brush that the drone couldn't even pick up. So Hera ended up finding him. It was a very long track. He actually fought with her. He ended up choking her through a trash can at her. There was four or five officers on scene, so Garfield County Glenwood and then Silt as well. And she had a successful bite where she, and, and how they're trained to bite is, and not the thrashing or anything. So she's trained to hold them where, where they're at. But had she not been there, it would have all been a dog pile of officers on this guy that we didn't know if he was armed, what his intentions were, so. But it was a track to a bite. She found cocaine on the track and then she, she bit the guy. So she had a, a very exciting time that day. Yes, it was a busy day.
And that was a good pun.
Yes.
I'm assuming she's chipped, microchipped, so if she gets stolen?
Yes, she's microchipped, up to date on all vaccinations as well.
Silly question, would there be like a pet insurance to reduce costs for town? I don't know, there's such a thing.
They offer pet insurance, but it's more for pet dogs. So I have them on my pet dogs to help with vet costs and everything. It could definitely be something we could look into, I just haven't looked into it.
We did contact SIRS about what it would cost to bring a canine on and they were, until we tell them how much the canine's worth, they're not going to give us a premium.
I was talking actually health-wise, if the dog goes through surgery or something.
Yeah.
So if a second offer is trained to work with the dog, I mean, can the dog have two handlers? Or is it if one person leaves, then the other person takes over? How easy is the switch from one to the other?
It kind of is dog-dependent. Hera is easy enough to get along with, but as they're finding out at Garfield County, she is very much my dog. If and when Calvin is, is trained, it would more or less be for a second dog, I believe. Now, if something did happen to me, where I left, he would be the first one on that and they would go through a bonding period, which at that point, he would know how to handle a dog that has such a high drive. We look at it as my dog, my pet dog is very ball-driven and wants to catch the ball, but then doesn't care about it. Hera will do everything she can for that ball. So that is kind of a different thing that you learn how to handle. So when Calvin's coming up and learning how to, to decoy, how to set the drugs, how to read the dog's behavior, he would assist me with Hera. But he would basically being set up, getting, getting set up for that second dog. Or if something did happen to me, that's when he would step in. Some agencies do the dual handling and it doesn't, it, it's better for just single-purpose dogs because they're a little bit easiergoing.
Okay.
With the previous dog, how many times was it used? And I know the population's increased, but.
I'm thinking with our agency and other agency assists, maybe twice a month with one really good drug bust. That was, that program at that time was set up and approved before, before I was able to say anything. before, before I was able to say anything. We learned a lot of positive things, we learned a lot of negative things. With a brand-new officer, with a brand-new dog, we learned a lot. Lot do's, lot don'ts. The reason I was entertaining this program was the dog is already trained. The person we are running through the testing process at this time is highly trained. There is no gaps, for lack of better words.
This is kind of a slam dunk, if we want to go the canine route.
If you're going to do it, this is like the best option, best option.
We've got the salt, the pepper shaker, we've got the matching sad. Sorry, I don't.
No, it's okay.
I don't mean that in a negative way.
If I can be the pepper, it's okay.
You can fight that out with the dog.
Okay.
Again, if, it's really a question in principle, do we want to do this? If so, when are we going to have this opportunity before us again? Where the handler and the dog are both ready and they're literally here in front of us?
The dog is.
I would have liked to have seen the dog.
Tiering spirit.
That's, there will be a demonstration.
I am not, but again.
Well, make Calvin do it, or LT, if he's listening.
That'd be part of his training, dog.
Exactly.
And then I guess, I don't know if this is for chief or for our attorney, how, how well does the evidence that a dog detects stand up in court?
Dogs always, the jury always agrees with the dog.
Especially if the dog comes in.
So cute.
I'm not sure you can answer that question. I mean, it is, it's valid evidence and, and what a dog can provide probable cause. So if you, yeah, if you have.
For the search.
For the search to occur.
And they can be impeached, right? Like a regular police officer, so if they have a lot of history of making mistakes, then that could, I think that can be brought up, raised in court to attack their credibility as a, as an officer.
I mean, again, how I, in, in, you know, if, if the dog's engaged in the searching, like going after and trying to locate a criminal, the dog simply is doing the job, that really doesn't get called into evidence because that's not the underlying crime that's being prosecuted. Although I guess they flee the, the officers, but, you know, like this warrant situation where they were trying to arrest somebody on a warrant, really the situations you're going to have where the actions of the dog are going to be subject to validation in court would be a situation, I think, where it, it smelled something and then a search occurred. And that is, you know, again, it, it provides the basis for probable cause if proper foundations, you know, policies have been put in place.
And this falls back to the training. If it's called in court, what was the, where'd you go to training? How many hours do you have? What the dog trained on? This is the legalization of marijuana within the state. Unless they're working the schools, you will find a, a working canine that'll sniff marijuana.
And that'll be a big keeping up on all the certs and everything. Now, whose job will that be? Will that be the handler or will that be you as the chief following up on that?
Yes, it's actually a three-prong. It's the handler's responsibility to maintain their certs, maintain the training logs. Everything's heavily logged. How many hours they searched for meth? And how many hours they, you know, did bite training or obedience training or this training? All that's heavily logged. So, but that's going to be the canine handler. Then the second would be Lieutenant Gronbeck. As an experienced canine handler, he knows what to look for. And that'll be my job to oversee, like, the rest of the department, to oversee that the proper trainings are being, being held and taken seriously.
The program that we used at Garfield County, it's, I had pulled some of my stats off of that as well, but we have to, like Chief was saying, we have to log everything. I mean, if I go out and play 15 minutes of, of ball with her, I have to log that as training. If we do find meth on, on a car, on an actual stop, I have to log that. If we run a car and there's no hit, so it's a negative, I have to log that. And everything is admissible, admissible in court. So, yeah, and, and to go with the legality of it and everything, I log how she, how her behavior changes and dogs don't lie. They're, they're doing it for a ball. So if she smells what she's supposed to, she's like, oh, I get my ball. She's so excited, she's like, ma'am, the ball's here. So she, she has no idea how to lie because she smells that thing that means ball. It's, it's really on us if we don't know how to read the dog or anything like that. That's where it gets kind of messy, so.
So all of that data you write down or whatever, does that stay here or does that go into a state database? I mean, or where does that go? Does it just stay here in this Silt Department or?
So it's, it's a database. It's a website called Pack Track. And there is a, it's like an annual fee of a hundred something dollars. But it's very high, like you can't really hack into it. There, there's a lot of law enforcement agencies that use it. I know Grand County's using it, the people in Grand Junction that we've trained with, Glenwood uses it, and you can kind of link it. So if I go to a, a training in Grand County, we can all link together and write down what each dog did and everything, so. But as far as the access to it, SLPD specifically, it would only be chief and lieutenant and whoever runs the dogs that would have access to our specific data, if that makes sense.
So you as a handler of that dog really would get more jurisdiction. I mean, if you, they needed somebody up in Basalt or something, you would have. So it's not like you're just, you leave the county or Silt area, that's where you go. You can go, she could go pretty much, if they called for it, she would have jurisdiction there then to use it.
Yes, it's called a mutual aid agreement. If they call and we can assist, we're then covered because we, they're now working under their, their umbrella, their jurisdiction. But it's, hey, we need a dog over here. Okay, I'm on my way. It's going through Lieutenant Gronbeck and then coming to me. If we got one person in town and somebody needs a dog somewhere and that's the only person we have, that's not feasible. We've got to take care of our town first. As much as we'd love helping other agencies and we work very well with them, we've got to take care of home front first.
And that's where I was going with this database. So if she goes up to Basalt and they, she does a drug bust or whatever, they would need to have that records to go to court with. That's what I was getting at is.
Yes, sir. They would actually subpoena her.
Okay.
And then when the DA's office would say, okay, we need these records. And to print them off and take them in and for, in for discovery.
Okay.
Do we know how the dog went from being given to five to $10,000?
Right now, as I touched on real briefly, Garfield County does not have anybody who's interested in becoming a canine handler.
No, I mean, I mean, the, the dog went from, you know, being given to a jurisdiction to now there is a cost to it.
Like I said, we, you know, started with these folks here and once we got up to the sheriff, he's like, oh, that's not exactly what, what was said.
Bad communication.
It's starting off here and then ended up here.
Okay.
And talking with Lou, Sheriff Lario, is when we came up with this, this price.
Okay.
Well, it makes sense because they want to recoup some of the costs that they've had and whatnot and.
It was a good thought at first to give it away, but then.
They kind of dangled that.
Yeah, it's like.
They baited us.
But if we move forward with this program, it is a, it is a great deal. And I see it being a great benefit to the department and to the town.
Does the dog live with the handler 24/7?
I have no other questions.
No.
Mr. Mayor, I make, because it's an action item.
It is an action item.
Make a, I move that we establish the canine unit for the Silt Police Department with the dog named Hera.
Second.
Okay. Mayor Protem made a motion to move forward with the establishment of a canine unit within the Silt Police Department with a dog named Hera, seconded by Trustee Root. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five to two.
Do you want to do a roll call for Sheila? Does she need to know or does it matter?
That one we're fine out, it's not in public.
No worries.
I got it.
Okay. Five to two.
Appreciate everybody's time and everybody's great questions. Once again, as you all know, my door's open all the time. So please feel free to stop in, ask questions, give me a call. And I'd be more than happy to move to answering questions or if I don't know the answers, find out for you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
We'll do a demonstration as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item up is the emergency ordinance number three, series 2025. An emergency ordinance of the town of Silt, Colorado adopting a temporary moratorium on accepting applications and licensing regarding the use of food trucks within the town.
Couple meetings ago, some questions were brought up regarding some of the condition of some of the food trucks that we have approved and some of the ancillary structures that they put up. This led to a discussion at the code subcommittee that went in, rolled into the planning and zoning committee about, do we need rules and regulations? And the answer from both the code subcommittee as well as planning and zoning was, yes, we need to put some rules and regulations in place. Currently, our code of ordinance really has no mechanism to regulate food trucks other than the initial application for a business license and a site plan review. You know, I think in, in that early discussion, we talked about, could we review these on an annual basis, et cetera? So before you tonight is an ordinance that would, under emergency powers due to health and safety, would enact a six-months moratorium on any new, any new food truck coming into town and being able to get a business license or go through a site plan review. I, I, I want to emphasize the new because we currently, and I want to make sure for the record, we currently have four fully functioning food trucks and then two part-time food trucks that are approved. And I want to make sure that it's known that those are not going to be impacted by this moratorium. We've got the two food trucks at the Ninth Street Roundabout. We've got the one on Seventh Street. We have one, what's the name of the property? What is it?
It's, it's Lively Electrics property.
Lively Electrics property. We also have one that is licensed at Brew Zone and then one that is licensed at Rosalinda. So I, again, I want to make sure that it's known that none of the six of those are unable to function under kind of a grandfathering. But anything new would have to be a moratorium until we have time to put some rules and regulations in place. You have an ordinance, an emergency ordinance in front of you. I will make one minor correction that it is not subject to the rifle Home Rule Charter. It's subject to the Silt Home Rule Charter. I don't know how many eyes read this thing, but we all missed that part in Section 5, so that would need to be amended and.
Somebody didn't copy and paste very well.
It was not a copy and paste. It was, we were working on both rifle things and Silt things on the same day and it just got.
And so, if you have any questions on the ordinance that was drafted, Attorney Sawyer is here and he can answer those. My biggest thing is I wanted to make sure that you understood that it doesn't impact, and for the audience, it does not impact the six trucks that we have approved in the town currently. Some of the, you know, some of the items that we would ultimately look at are the site plan requirements, the site plan reviews. But we also may want to consider, is there a limitation of the number of food trucks that we want to allow in the town? You know, both the code committee, but even more so at the planning and zoning, one of the concerns that was raised is that it's a pretty low bar to set up a food truck. And we're hurting businesses that might want to set up brick and mortar because the entry level is so much less. We want to encourage the brick and mortar as much as we possibly can. But these are the, these are the kind of discussions, I think, that ultimately would come out of the moratorium in setting up some rules and regulations. Obviously, we're not going to try to recreate the wheel. We will research other communities' rules and regulations as it pertains to food trucks and then try to bring something back to the subcommittee, ultimately the plan commit, planning and zoning, and then ultimately you folks to establish some rules and regulations.
Makes sense. I would just add that, so this is structured as an emergency ordinance. Your health and safety powers are invoked. The town does not have currently criteria to evaluate this particular land use that involves selling food to the public. Those are the regulations we want to research and adopt. But as an emergency ordinance, it does require the affirmative vote of five trustees.
I, I understand the emergency and I, I hear what you're saying. I was just curious about like special events. So if we have a farmer's market and we need Culvers to come help us or some food truck.
This would not impact special events. It only impacts the permanent food trucks that we have throughout the community.
Okay.
But we would put in rules and regulations regarding temporary food trucks and what they need to do.
We can do that too.
Yes.
We've got a list of.
Are there any applications that haven't been approved, any food truck?
We do not have any submitted applications. We have had a couple of inquiries for additional food trucks, which again, after board comments meeting or two ago, kind of brought this up a couple of levels to say, hey, we really need to think about whether we want to put a moratorium in place to give us time to put the rules and regulations in place.
Yes, we should have done this a few years ago. Not the moratorium, but the rules and regulations.
How about still exploring ideas of having a designated place for food trucks to, that make it.
Food truck.
Yeah, make it look cool and have a number of stipulated food trucks that can be there. So it can be like a go-to location when you want to explore different options for food trucks.
Provided there are different options for food.
Maybe, yeah, there could be.
They're all different.
Moab has a, has a great version of that. There's one part of there downtown, it's just a giant dirt lot and it's, it's got to be more than 10, maybe, maybe 12 or 15 now. It's exclusively food trucks. And you just, my kids and I ride our bikes there from wherever we're tenting.
Yeah.
And I can just, okay, kids, go pick something out.
Here's a credit card.
Even if it is similar food, I feel like I have my preferred food trucks that I like to go to for specific things. But I get what you're saying. Always try to attract diversity. Diversity, that, that would be ideal. But having a designated place could help with the landscape, so.
Yes.
Hopefully more diverse, maybe too.
You want to do this one?
Mm-hmm, yeah, because they're the.
Ready?
Well, I'd suck.
Totally agree, I think that's a great idea.
I don't see the language that would pertain to permanent.
Well, there is a, a, oh, it's section two. During the term of the moratorium, no new food truck-related businesses shall be permitted to be located within the town.
Yeah, so I'm wondering like when on the hook rolls through town or the rolling fork shows up.
They would, so long as it's not a town event at the town park, they would not be able to just roll up.
We don't.
So we would have to put language in there because Garfield County Public Health considers a food truck temporary if they're here three consecutive days or less. And so I wonder if we could put language in there that specifies a permanent food truck that is looking to be in town three consecutive days or more.
No new nontemporary food truck related.
The fish truck would be one of them that just comes once, whatever.
Be temporary.
Yeah, they come about once a month, once every other month.
Yeah, we don't want to, we want to make sure that one comes.
Well, they're, they're coming...
Got to have that fish truck.
I think, I think they're coming Friday.
They are coming Friday. But, but I think it is, because that's how we cover events, like what you were asking about, it is three consecutive days or less, so they don't, they're exempt from going through the site plan review that we, that we require for permanent food trucks.
So, I wouldn't necessarily say that this moratorium applies to...
Garfield County-wide.
The non, the non-permanent site.
I mean, no new food truck-related business.
I think...
Would that be considered, would On The Hook be considered new, because they already have a relationship with the town?
I think Trustee Angel Hertz.
No, they're temporary.
Nontemporary, no new nontemporary food trucks.
That works for me, I mean, that, we know what the intent is.
Yes.
And that's section two?
Yes, section two and section five both have that modification.
Last sentence.
Nontemporary.
No new nontemporary food truck-related business.
I mean, then, what's temporary?
Well, that's already been stated, three days.
Three days or less.
You come for three days, you leave for a day, you come back for three days, you leave for a day?
Three consecutive days.
Yeah, so you come for three days, you pull out of town for a day, and then you come back for three more days, leave for a day?
It's up to you if you want to make it more strict.
I mean, I think my concerns were the condition of the existing ones, and how they're not following their site plan, so I feel like we're going down a road here of not fixing the problem that we currently have.
Aren't we temporarily stopping the expansion of the problem while we craft policies to deal with the root cause of the problem? Like, isn't this a stopgap as such?
Yeah.
It is, but is it, I'm more concerned about fixing what we have, I mean, we can do a site plan and say, no, we don't want another, your taco truck doesn't, doesn't work for us.
That's more code enforcement, isn't it?
Well, and then if we have to change what these people are subject to, it's going to be more, the more people are subject to that, it's going to be more complicated to change, is my thought, so if we stop at six, and then we only have to deal with six people that we have to address your concerns, which I think are very valid concerns.
I'm sure the subcommittee will be going back and revising the policies that are associated with food trucks more generally, but again, this just gives us a stopgap to control expansion of the issue while we deal with enforcement and updating our policies. That's the lens to which I was viewing it.
Yeah.
Yes. I agree.
Yeah, I, I mean, I get that side of it, but I still think this is not taking care of the issue that we're dealing with in town.
It's not, but it's pushing the brakes a little bit, just...
It's just, it's trying to, it's trying to stop additional issues in addition to ones we already have to fix.
I think it's a start, though, at least, once we have this, then we can kind of go back maybe in P and Z and everybody, and kind of look at what we do have for problems and fix them. At least right now, we're not going to have more new ones created.
Because fixing the problem, the current ones that consider a concern, I don't want to say a problem, but we have concerns with, people may have concerns with, is because they, some of them didn't have to go through site plan review or those things, because they were here before that, so, how do you address, we have to be careful how we address existing businesses.
An emergency ordinance may not be the best mechanism.
That's true, because some of them didn't have to go through.
And that's why we have the issues we have with some of them. I think the ones that we've had with the site plan review and some of those aren't the ones that we're concerned about, at least that would be my thought.
Well, they've all had a site plan review.
No.
Not all of them.
No.
There's preexisting nonconforming.
Yeah, and that's where the preexisting nonconforming, fixing that one can be more sensitive than...
We have two that are preexisting nonconforming, correct?
We do.
I would assume there's still some codes that we can hold them accountable to, as far as appearance of their businesses.
Perhaps, and I'm sure we can craft some language that would require the nonconforming uses to come into conformance at some point.
It looks very...
Do we need to kind of table this and come back with the reworded, or?
I think we do what we have here.
Yeah, it's an emergency, so we can just make the changes.
We just make the change, other than section five would be Silt?
Yeah, section five changed to Silt, and section...
Two to be no new nontemporary.
New nontemporary.
All right, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the emergency ordinance number three, series twenty twenty-five, as presented, excepting section five would read the town of Silt instead of the town of Rifle, and section two would be no new, be for nontemporary, no, no, during turn one.
Yeah, no new nontemporary.
Yeah, nontemporary food trucks.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Seif to approve emergency ordinance number three, series twenty twenty-five, with two changes, section five will be changed to Silt instead of Rifle, and section two will include language for no new nontemporary. Seconded by Trustee Brittonall, all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. Next up is a cell tower land lease, Skyway Towers.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you for joining us, yeah.
I just couldn't make sure you bought her a dog. You're doing good work, thank you.
Thank you, Perry.
As you know, we had been approached by Skyway Towers to locate a monopole co-location cell tower up at the cemetery on our water tank property. We did receive an actual proposal from Skyway Towers, or a letter, you know, with the skeleton, for one thousand one twenty-five a month, with a 1.5% annual escalator, and then $500 each additional carrier. And it's my understanding that there could be as many as four carriers on the tower. So, the maximum, if all four carriers were on the tower immediately, would be one thousand, or $2,625 a month, and then would escalate at 1.5% on an annual basis. The initial contract or lease would be for a five-year period, with ten successive five-year renewals, for a total of fifty-five years. In our conversations with Skyway Towers, both Attorney Sawyer and myself have expressed consternation with a 1.5% escalator, in that it is consistently below CPI. We have been rather rebuffed in that all cell towers are only 1.5%. I, I am not here to tell you it's a good deal or not a good deal. We did, Attorney Sawyer did some research, I did some research, and this lease rate for a new land lease seems relatively low compared to some of the other ones that are out there. Now, geography plays, plays a part. The cell tower in the middle of Aspen on municipal property is north of $4,000 a month, in terms of the land lease. Aspen's a little different than Silt.
Just a little.
Colbran is north of $3,000. Colbran's not that dissimilar from Silt. I don't, I don't believe that this is a great financial deal, but it may be mitigated with the desire to improve cell service in the town, which is somewhat suspect most of the time. We do have a commitment from Skyway Towers and T-Mobile for one provider to locate on the tower. If we were to approve, you know, the skeleton of the proposal, subject to obviously papering it up, Skyway has indicated that they would immediately start talking to the other carriers about location. We put this in front of you this evening for you to either A, accept the proposal, B, reject the proposal, or C, suggest something different.
With that, we really have had spirited discussions...
Yes.
...with this provider, and have gone back and forth on how this lease is at the bottom of what would be acceptable, and they have not budge.
So...
Discussions have been frequent and spirited.
Question, so, he puts this tower up, I'm just asking, so if he puts this tower up, and he doesn't, somehow he doesn't pay for this thing, the owner of the company that bought, sold him the tower, can they come and put a lien on our land, because he didn't pay for it?
No.
Okay, I didn't, just didn't know.
Government, first, government land can't be leaned like that, and, I mean, they, they might have a security interest in the tower, where they could come disassemble it and haul it off.
Take the tower away.
Yeah, that's...
They can't lean, they can't lean the town's...
Okay, I'm just asking.
Where exactly is this going to be, just because, you know, our cemetery's so small, and we're going to need room for more residents, I guess, so to speak, and...
Well, they'll have good cell service with their very good tower, you know?
It would be located on more of the water tank side of the property, and it's a relatively small footprint. Joe, you want to, or Director Lundeen, you want to jump in?
Yeah, if you, there's room up there for you, but I'm, also, I've been trying to contact Bear Ranch for trying to acquire more property for the cemetery and change the road, but they're hard to get ahold of.
Okay.
But there is room for the cell tower, and still there, future grave sites that are planned for up there also.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, I'd like to see us get some more money out of the deal, you know, and, and I guess someday, if this tower becomes obsolete, I'd like to see this company take it with them, not just leave it.
They, they have an obligation to take the tower if they quit using it, unless if the town says we'd like to keep it, we have the option to keep the, keep the tower if for some reason we felt it would be beneficial for town communication facilities.
And I'm assuming it'll be fenced and all that, so...
There'll be a fence, it has scheduled site plan review, and there'll be a little bit of beautification enhancement, but yeah, it's a giant loophole.
Not a palm tree.
Not the palm tree, man.
And not an eighty-foot pine tree.
So, just some context about this company. Last, what was it, I think I read online, a little over a year ago, they raised $200 million, this is not a small scrappy startup that needs to underbid its contracts, this is a major, major telecom provider for these structures. They currently have, wait for it, five hundred and seventy-seven cell tower locations currently active in the U.S., thirteen of which are in the state of Colorado. Why are we cutting them a discount? I appreciate that we need the service, but if we give it away, and 1.5% for a more than half a century-long lease, are you kidding me?
I'm not sure.
Are you kidding me?
I'm not sure.
This has to be a joke, I looked to see if it was April first.
I'm not sure we're giving it away, I think that's what Skyway Towers is getting in the majority of their locations. And we, as Attorney Sawyer said, we have had spirited discussions about the 1.5% escalator.
It has to be more, like, this is just a nonstarter at 1.5%.
They have, and this is entirely up to the Board of Trustees, they have said anything more than one and a half percent is a nonstarter for them.
And we, I, I think Jim and I, other than the fact that there is a desire to increase the reliability of cellphone coverage here in Silt, I don't know, I mean, we're probably even worse than agnostic about this particular proposal, it's just, I mean, but we have, we have had, I think, four calls with this provider, and we have hammered both, there's twelve, eleven hundred and fifty dollars per month is, for base rent, is the bottom of what you would get for base rent in a cell tower lease, and then the 1.5%, as you indicated, over fifty years.
Makes a difference.
Yeah, well, and it, it makes, it makes that lease forty-five years from now, that the Board of Trustees looks back and says, what were we thinking when we signed that back in twenty twenty-five?
If it's going to be at the numbers they want, then it can't be any more than ten years. I wouldn't want to do it for ten minutes myself, but again, as, as another lever, is, there's no way this can happen for fifty-five years.
Agnostic is exactly the point, accept, reject, propose something different. We went round and round with them, to the point where I finally said, put it on paper, send it to me, we'll take it to the board.
Just because that way you can say, we took it to the board, the board said, and so now this is your other, we need to do something different.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we need something different, I would say, what do you expect?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would suppose...
Is it, is it $3,000 plus CPI, is it $2,000 plus CPI?
Well, my thing is, I would almost do just a base rent, put as many, if you could do, well, Culbran's getting 3,000, a minimum of 25, and I don't care how many people you put, you put, it doesn't matter to me.
I'm not as worried...
The tower's there, the tower's there.
I'm not as worried about the starting rate, I'm worried about...
And then have the escalator...
1.5% is what kills you in fifty-five years.
Yeah.
It does.
If we could come in at 2,003%, that works.
Is the one in Culbran one of their towers, or somebody else's?
Uh, no.
Oh, it's a different.
Oh, okay.
It's different.
They have a 4% annual increase.
Yes, some of these other towers have a much different...
And again, maybe there's something magical about that land in Culbran, that it serves all of Plateau Valley, I don't know.
Might be some peak.
It might be, yeah, you never know.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but, but it was...
Relative of the person who owns the tower company?
But when, when we came across that one, it was like...
I mean, that very well could be right there, actually, it could be, you never know.
I feel like we've got to come back, they're just negotiating, and, and they're cutthroat, and good for them, but we have a responsibility if we're signing an agreement for more than half of a century, and these numbers just don't work.
They offered to give you $225,000 upfront.
For what?
For the fifty-five years. I'm not sure they expected...
Is it April first?
I, I, I'm not sure they expected the town manager of Silt to know how to do a present value calculation, you know?
They didn't do their homework on you.
Of their, even, even the low end of the, the revenue stream was PV, NPV was 250-some thousand dollars, I'm like, yeah, you're a little light on that.
I think we could come in at 2,000, and either pick a number, somewhere between 1.5 and four, I would advocate for 3% annually, or peg it to the cost of living increase, whatever that is, that's what our, all we're doing is covering our own costs for our own citizens to utilize whomever is on the tower. They're, they're probably charging 30%, so they can keep the other 26.
So, are you suggesting we charge a minimum, you know, a rental fee, a lease, land lease, for the tower, and not have any extra charges come in for extra carriers?
Oh, I think we should have that, too.
No, those charges would continue to exist.
Okay, I, I just wanted to clarify.
Basically use their numbers, but change the 1,000, the base, to 2,000, and change 1.5% to either three, which I think if you look at the cost of living increase, it probably averages out to somewhere just above three, or we peg it to the cost of living itself annually.
What about $2,000 and CPI not to exceed 4%?
I'm fine with that. It's, again, it's, we're trying to future-proof something for fifty-plus years.
And I will, I will tell you that, based on our conversation, I suggest, I, I would say they're probably just going to reject it outright, which...
Good day.
Well, then we don't need them.
It's a good thing they're not the only tower provider in the entire U.S. We'll find another one.
Or, or maybe they'll find land somewhere else, I mean... Or, or maybe they'll find land somewhere else. I mean, again, it's not that the town is.
Got the only piece of land.
Yeah, that, that our budget doesn't work if we don't find a lessy for this spot. It just so happens that the town cemetery parcel has some advantageous qualities for a cellphone tower. That's why we've had a few people come and request that of us.
Absolutely.
But it should be a, it should be a market viable lease, but yeah.
Half a century.
As much as we want to improve cell service in silt, we don't need to give it away.
That's, I think it's fine.
So, is everybody okay with those numbers as sort of negotiating points?
Like, go in with four percent and maybe back down to three, but otherwise, I mean.
Not a small scrappy startup. I'm sure they can carve out something out of the two hundred million dollars they raised last year to cover two grand a month.
Yeah, two grand and four, four percent.
In our negotiations, I, I am pretty sure that the planet will stop rotating if they were to agree to this.
Perfect.
I think, I think that's what, I'm pretty sure that's what they said.
And, and, and that, that's the, the beauty of what I'm hearing because in some negotiations, the power to walk away and say no is the best thing you can do.
Yep, yep.
But if they're going to act that way, do we necessarily want to do business with them anyway? Yeah.
Well, they're just a middleman. Somebody else is going to put the cellular receivers on their tower. They're.
All right, well, we, we have direction.
Perfect.
All right. We need an actual motion on that?
No, no, I think you've given us direction.
Next up is the appointment to serve on the Chamber of Commerce.
Pro Tem Henry.
So you.
See, now you all just want to leave.
Well.
Well, I, so ironically, Larry already, I, I knew I had reached out to Jim to ask for an update on if we'd even been approved our seat. And within probably seven minutes after you reached out to him, he sent me three or four emails. I have an invite to their next meeting. I have the agenda.
There you go.
But I haven't responded. There's been a motion in a second.
But I haven't responded to anything yet. I just want to add that trustee Engelhardt and I discussed it before our official meeting began, and I'm, I'm willing and able and happy to do this if I can step back and be sort of the, the secondary seat on the CML.
CML Policy Committee?
Yeah.
And I was the alternate?
Yeah, so the Kim can step up and be the primary.
I've already got it on my calendar anyways, so that's fine.
It helps me manage my time a little better and it kind of puts us each in our areas of expertise, perhaps?
Sure. I'll, I'll say I have an area of expertise. I'll own that. Sorry, just kidding.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm happy to do it if, if, if no one else has any interest in it. I'm sure Larry's not going to be psyched about it, but there you have it.
I could be a backup for you if you ever needed. I don't know if it works that way, where you need to appoint someone and that person has to be there or if they can.
We'll continue until apprehended. Well, sometime you'll just show up because I can't and they'll be like, what the?
I don't know.
I'll talk. I'll ask.
Sounds like we have a point.
Do we make a, do we devote on this motion the second or we just, we didn't need, is it a motion thing?
A motion was made and it was duly seconded.
Yeah.
We did have a motion by trustee Clausen to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Henry.
Yes.
Seconded by trustee Brittenall.
It is a motion.
Sure.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That was the quickest agenda item.
You're welcome.
Manager and staff reports.
Uh, I'm only going to talk about one thing tonight, and this came up today because there is a hearing on it Wednesday night. There is a proposal to turn in, ru, turn Rue Ranch into a solar farm.
I saw that.
Um. The. We are a referral agency, but due to a glitch in our email system, the email was not necessarily received appropriately, and so we did not provide any referral comments. I would say, and I think you know my opinion about solar fields on prime developable land, but this would be a horrible land use decision to put a solar field just on the other side of Dave. For those that don't know, it's just on the, it's just on the east side of Davis Point. It's the roughly, I don't know, eighty acres, one hundred and twenty acres of land between Davis Point, the alpaca farm, and then it's the school. And this is in our comprehensive plan. It actually was originally, Director Centeno, Centeno filled me in that it was originally planned to be included as part of the Rayleigh Ranch development. We will write referral comments based upon your direction on this one.
It's a horrible idea, yeah.
Um, I, I would say that this is a horrible waste of perfectly developable land in the river valley and that would, twenty years from now, don't know what it would be.
Yeah.
And the solar company Pivot Solar that is applying was supposed to talk to us. They did talk to us at one point, but it was nonspecific about three different sites. And we've never been talked to about this site. That was clearly in the Garfield County pre-application meeting that they were supposed to talk to us, but they never talked to us specifically that they were going to do it on this site. Tell us what we want to do and we'll go ahead.
It looks like it's a two-part thing, isn't it? Two-phase. And what, what I read about it was going to be two phases, seventy acres all total.
Yeah.
So, but.
Well, it's because it's split by the.
But I think there was going to be one phase and then in a couple of years, the other phase or something, I guess, from what I heard.
That sounds like a great place for a solar farm where the sun goes around Davis Point.
Yeah.
Couple more going up on Silt Mesa too, this whole.
Yeah. What's, what's the right word? I am vehemently opposed to it.
If you would like us to, we will vehemently oppose.
Yes.
Yes.
In our staff review, but I will also attend the planning and zoning hearing on Wednesday evening and for the record, opine. I wish Commissioner Will would have stuck around for this one.
Yes.
Maybe that's why he left. Because I'm guessing, Noah Perry, that he probably doesn't agree with that use either.
He's, he's the appeals body for this decision.
That's probably why he stepped away.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think his departure was planned.
Okay. But we, we can, we can also prepare a kind of a written summary of comments.
Yeah.
I mean, it's within our three-mile plan, the town's comp plan. We have a, you know, agreements. It's not that our comp plan is binding on the county, but they're supposed to take consideration of it.
We have a huge new residential development that just went, and it ran in between the school, right, and, and silt with all the apartments and everything. I mean.
Yeah, that's a.
It's on this side of Davis.
That's, that's on this side of Davis Point.
I just, like you said, I mean, it's just so developable.
Mm-hmm.
Right there. I, yeah, I agree. It doesn't seem like the best use for that.
Okay, we will put the effort in to oppose.
Be vehemently. Like you said, with the sun path that it has.
I'm not a solar engineer, but.
In the winter, yeah.
They're going to be hiring.
My kids going to college for.
I've got my sun surveyor app on my phone now for my work stuff I have to do. I can go out there and.
See what I'll do, yeah.
Look at the solar path for the, on the twenty-second of December, which is the shortest day of the year to see what, how much sun is going to be.
That's, that's all I have to report on tonight unless you have questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Staff, please? Sorry, I'll be quiet, mayor.
No, do you have anything for staff?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. Update from the board and board comments. Who wants to start?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
It's late. I'm not going to say a whole lot other than thank you, staff. Good job.
Okay.
Question for Joe. Just, it's too late now, but when A-one went out of business, did we go out and pick up anything? Or do we have enough stuff?
We did go. We picked up a message board and we picked up several barriers and several cones.
I thought about it.
Quite a bit of stuff.
To ask way back and I forgot. So, I see Jabaz, they did get that sold and Jabaz is moving in there, so.
Yeah. We got a good deal on a solar message board.
I thought about it. I thought, oh, we got to get out there and pick up stuff we need, so. That's all I had.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem?
Just a notification to everyone that I won't be at the next Board of Trustees meeting on February twenty-fourth. I will be in an airplane, flying back, but not back.
They got Wi-Fi on airplanes.
In sixty blocks, you get Wi-Fi.
You got internet.
On a trustee salary? Come on.
It's a reimbursable expense.
Technicalities.
Something trade on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Same. Thank you to our staff. Thank you for the board, working well together. Really appreciate.
Trustee Engelhardt.
I was happy to see the High Water Farms people here, and I hope they do more events. I would, the, the event I went to where it was a dinner in Carbondale, and they did some, you know, all the food, except for the lamb, was grown on the farm. And so, it's a really nice night out. It's a fun time. And for the price, I would have, I mean, I would have paid that for that dinner. And then the money is also going to a really cool youth program that we have here in the area. And they did these squash rings that were as good or better than onion rings. And it's a permanent recipe that I kept on my list. So, just a lot of really great things happening over there. It's also where the nature preserve is. If you've never gone on a walk up there. So, that was great to see.
Trustee Brittenall.
I just want to thank manager Mann and probably works on behalf of the crew that plays horseshoes every Sunday in that area. I brought his attention Monday morning that there was kind of a mud hole up there just because of snow melt and everything else. And by Monday afternoon, they had some gravel already getting put in there. And then they followed up on Thursday and packed the parking area down and went out there on Sunday. It was dry as could be and everything was nice. Again, we had some dry weather, but the amount of gravel should hold up and whatnot. And they just really appreciate the town and all the stuff they've done for us up there.
I got nothing. Next item on the.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
I can.
Uh, motion by trustee Seifert to adjourn the meeting, seconded by trustee Brittenall. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Seventeen minutes.
Congratulations.